Well, good evening and welcome to the Board of Education for Greeley Evans School District 6. Today is April 10th, 2023. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. And to the freedom and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
I'm Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Pappas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
All board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Again, welcome, whether you are joining us here in person or you're joining us online. We are glad that you are with us here tonight. I do just want to start out with a few announcements and celebrations. We have a packed meeting tonight. We have a lot to cover, but do want to acknowledge a few things. And one of the things that's on our agenda tonight, but that you won't see is because it's in our consent agenda. It is our personnel report. This is when we hire people and it is also when people resign and when they retire. And there are a couple of people I just want to draw attention to tonight, and one is Ms. Molly McCall, who is the Assistant Principal at Shawshine and has been such a fantastic administrator there and has served this district so faithfully. And as someone who has tutored at Shawshine for the last decade, I just want to say congratulations to Ms. McCall on her retirement, and she will be very much missed. And then I also want to acknowledge Ms. Lori McCarty. And Ms. Lori McCarty was our nurse during and oversaw our nursing and health services during COVID. And that job, as you might imagine, was immense. And she worked, I don't even want to guess how much she worked and how many hours she put in in the years of 2020 and 2021 and 2022, seeing us all the way to that point. And so we wish Ms. Lori McCarty, again, great retirement. And a couple of other announcements. Greeley West FFA invites you to their annual Farm to Table event at Greeley West High School on April 27th. If you haven't gotten to see the new Greeley West High School, this is an excellent opportunity to do that. Students raise meat and produce produce and participate in silent and live auction, and you can purchase plants grown by the FFA students. Again, this is where we house a lot of our agricultural programs and our agricultural pathway. And so if you get that chance, I would encourage you to go on April 27th to Greeley West. And then finally, tonight, we do have some great celebrations. We're going to be honoring some veteran students and some Daniel students, and we have one very special staff member to honor as well. And so with that, we will get started with our meeting, and we'll need a motion to approve the agenda.
A move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Is there any comment on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
I'm Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We are now to our board member comments and reports. And so, Ms. Sullivan, if you will lead us off, please.
Once again, I don't have a lot to report on my end. I've just been trying to build up my time back at work so that they're friendly enough to release me. So I'm going to be hitting a lot of the events over the next two months. I finally got rid of my cane off of a bet from my brother, so he owes me $20 if he's watching this.
Mr. Norwood.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of things going on. Always respect when we get our legal counsel to come in and keep us up on what's going on in the state. So we're very fortunate with that. Lot of activities coming up in the next month. So here we go. Going to get a chance to go out to a lot of graduations and ceremonies, which is a great time of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. Ms. Mash.
I was able to attend Mamma Mia at Greeley Central or Greeley West, sorry, Greeley West High School. The second musical this semester, which is pretty ambitious, and that was amazing. Beautiful set, great talent, fun music. And if you like musicals, you can go see Frontier's production of The Wizard of Oz this coming weekend. One of my liaison schools is Northridge High School, and I got to attend the presentation of their senior capstone STEM project. And that was just a wonderful opportunity to see the wide range of where STEM leads in industry and in their creativity. There was a bicycle that you could ride that would generate enough battery to charge your devices. So a little reward after you've done your exercise to then use your phone. There was virtual reality. Some of the student athletes created a website where their peers could do stretches and exercises in the offseason, as well as a nutritious snack. So great job to all those senior students at Northridge. They all were very well spoken and just really knew where they were going and what they were going to do next. And always fun to witness our sporting events amongst the schools. It's spring baseball, track, tennis, swim and dive, and I'm always impressed with the level of sportsmanship I see between the athletes encouraging one another, especially some of those sports where there's the last person across the finish line. Everyone is cheering for that person, and I really appreciate that. Keep up the good work. And yeah, we're really excited to get into this season where we're celebrating our students' achievements over the years and sending them off to whatever's next. So graduations are always some of the best times of the year.
Mr. Bentley.
Not quite as busy as it has been in the past, the last couple of weeks, but on March 30th, we got to go to Maplewood Smart Lab celebration. They opened that up and got to recognize the donors and the students, got to give us a little tour of what they've been doing and all the fun projects and applications that it brought to them. It was pretty amazing to see those kids work. Stuff that most of us don't even know how to operate. Definitely me and Rob, we're not that smart. Same night, Dream Team had their banquet where they gave out their scholarships. So that's always fun to attend, and it was well attended, and a lot of great kids that got to kind of small token of their fruitful journey with the Dream Team. It's always fun to hear their stories and see where they've come from and where they're headed. So other than that, it was just business as usual for me and excited for graduation season.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Dr. Campos Spitsi.
Yeah, hi. So last week was really fun. On March 29th, it was, I believe, last Wednesday, I got to go to Ames Community College for their Get Into the Guts event. It's an event where different partners, community partners, come together to expose eighth grade students from District 6 and RE3J.
Well, good evening and welcome to the Board of Education for Greeley Evans School District 6. Today is April 10th, 2023. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag. Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
I'm Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Pappas.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
All board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Again, welcome, whether you are joining us here in person or you're joining us online. We are glad that you are with us here tonight. I do just want to start out with a few announcements and celebrations. We have a packed meeting tonight. We have a lot to cover, but do want to acknowledge a few things. And one of the things that's on our agenda tonight, but that you won't see is because it's in our consent agenda. It is our personnel report. This is when we hire people. And it is also when people resign and when they retire. And there are a couple of people I just want to draw attention to tonight. And one is Ms. Molly McCall, who is the Assistant Principal at Shawshene and has been such a fantastic administrator there and has served this district so faithfully. And as someone who has tutored at Shawshene for the last decade, I just want to say congratulations to Ms. McCall on her retirement, and she will be very much missed. And then I also want to acknowledge Ms. Lori McCarty. And Ms. Lori McCarty was our nurse during and oversaw our nursing and health services during COVID. And that job, as you might imagine, was immense. And she worked, I don't even want to guess how much she worked and how many hours she put in in the years of 2020 and 2021 and 2022, seeing us all the way to that point. And so we wish Ms. Lori McCarty, again, a great retirement. And a couple of other announcements. Greeley West FFA invites you to their annual Farm to Table event at Greeley West High School on April 27th. If you haven't gotten to see the new Greeley West High School, this is an excellent opportunity to do that. Students raise meat and produce produce and participate in a silent and live auction. And you can purchase plants grown by the FFA students. Again, this is where we house a lot of our agricultural programs and our agricultural pathway. And so if you get that chance, I would encourage you to go on April 27th to Greeley West. And then finally, tonight, we do have some great celebrations. We're going to be honoring some Betcher students and some Daniel students. And we have one very special staff member to honor as well. And so with that, we will get started with our meeting, and we'll need a motion to approve the agenda.
A move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Is there any comment on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
I'm Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We are now to our board member comments and reports. And so, Ms. Sullivan, if you will lead us off, please.
Once again, I don't have a lot to report on my end. I've just been trying to build up my time back at work so that they're friendly enough to release me. So I'm going to be hitting a lot of the events over the next two months. I finally got rid of my cane off of a bet from my brother, so he owes me $20 if he's watching this.
Mr. Norwood.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of things going on. Always respect when we get our legal counsel to come in and keep us up on what's going on in the state. So we're very fortunate with that. Lot of activities coming up in the next month. So here we go. Going to get a chance to go out to a lot of graduations and ceremonies, which is a great time of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. Ms. Mash.
I was able to attend Mamma Mia at Greeley Central, or Greeley West, sorry, Greeley West High School. The second musical this semester, which is pretty ambitious, and that was amazing. Beautiful set, great talent, fun music. And if you like musicals, you can go see Frontier's production of The Wizard of Oz this coming weekend. One of my liaison schools is Northridge High School, and I got to attend the presentation of their Senior Capstone STEM Project. And that was just a wonderful opportunity to see the wide range of where STEM leads in industry and in their creativity. There was a bicycle that you could ride that would generate enough battery to charge your devices. So a little reward after you've done your exercise to then use your phone. There was virtual reality. Some of the student athletes created a website where their peers could do stretches and exercises in the offseason, as well as a nutritious snack. So great job to all those senior students at Northridge. They all were very well spoken and just really knew where they were going and what they were going to do next. And always fun to witness our sporting events amongst the schools. It's spring baseball, track, tennis, swim and dive. And I'm always impressed with the level of sportsmanship I see between the athletes, encouraging one another, especially some of those sports where there's the last person across the finish line. Everyone is cheering for that person, and I really appreciate that. Keep up the good work. And yeah, we're really excited to get into this season where we're celebrating our students' achievements over the years and sending them off to whatever's next. So graduations are always some of the best times of the year.
Mr. Bentley.
Not quite as busy as it has been in the past, the last couple of weeks, but on March 30th, we got to go to Maplewood Smart Lab celebration. They opened that up and get to recognize the donors and the students. Got to give us a little tour of what they've been doing and all the fun projects and applications that it brought to them. It was pretty amazing to see those kids work stuff that most of us don't even know how to operate. Definitely me and Rob, we're not that smart. Same night, Dream Team had their banquet where they gave out their scholarships. So that's always fun to attend, and it was well attended and a lot of great kids that got to kind of small token of their fruitful journey with the Dream Team. It's always fun to hear their stories and see where they've come from and where they're headed. So other than that, it was just business as usual for me and excited for graduation season.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Dr. Campos Spitsy.
Yeah, hi. So last week was really fun. On March 29th, it was, I believe, last Wednesday, I got to go to Ames Community College for their Get Into the Guts event. It's an event where different partners, community partners, come together to expose eighth grade students from District 6 and RE3J to healthcare careers. And so it was well attended. There was about 100 students there and lots of community partnerships. I was there representing Sunrise, but there was UC Health, there was Orthopedic Center of the Rockies was there. North Range Behavioral Health was there, and obviously District 6 really helped kind of lead it. Nelson Rodriguez was there, who's in charge of our summer internships for our juniors. And Jordan was there, who's one of our career pathway folks. And anyway, I really enjoyed, two of my liaison schools were there, Chapelo and Brentwood Middle Schools, and really loved getting the kids excited about healthcare. And I think the statistic we got emailed after the event was that 88% of the students were more interested in working in healthcare in their future, and so love that. Then the following day, last Thursday, like Kyle mentioned, we got to visit the Maplewood Mustangs once again. Principal Ramon Reyes led us invade his school one more time to just express our gratitude to the Success Foundation, to the Shute family, who donated the Smart Lab there that evening. With Director Bentley, I also got to attend the Greeley Dream Team banquet, one of my favorite events, honoring the graduating seniors who were scholarship recipients, one of whom, Dylan Roseman, was also a recipient of the Bochers Scholarship. So super proud of our students, our graduating seniors. Like everyone said, this is just kind of a really exciting time. And then over the weekend, I got to go to the Greeley Rotary Club's WD Fargo Gala, where we honored Dick Bond, really a giant in the scene of Colorado education, Northern Colorado specifically, was actually one of the founding members of the Greeley Dream Team, which, if you're not familiar with them, with the Greeley Dream Team, their mission is to provide extra resources for minority students and students whose parents haven't gone to college, so first-generation college students, to help them achieve academic success and go to college. And so Dick Bond was one of the founding members back in 1987, which is really cool. And at that gala, our Pooter Learning Center, Sam Dances, was able to be a recipient for a large donation from the Greeley Rotary to the Pooter Learning Center. So that was really, really cool. And then just kind of in other news, I got to sit in on, I'm part of the UNC College of Medicine Advisory Committee, and we just had a meeting with the founding dean, Beth Longenecker, about the progress of the medical school opening in Greeley. It'll be the third medical school in the whole state of Colorado, so pretty exciting to be part of that process as well.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. Ms. Pappas.
Yes, in addition to the good time we had at the Maplewood Smart Lab. And yeah, it is kind of humbling when you really have to have kids explain things two or three times before you get it. And then the Dream Team Awards banquet, of course, is always just such a special event and such a, the Dream Team is such a resource for all of our kids that participate in the Dream Team. But additionally, Tommy Medina III invited us to an event with the Ark of Weld County Film Festival at Greeley Central a couple of weeks ago. And so Best Buddies, which is a chapter at Greeley Central, they presented films, and it was just fabulous. There were short clips from different programs in the community and in our school district. Envision had a video, Project Surge, some IFL programs. And if you have a chance next year, I would highly recommend going to that film festival. It was pretty powerful. It was very powerful. So thank you, Tommy Medina III, for inviting us. And then additionally, I was able to go to Dos Rios to be part of a community helper panel with second graders. And it was really an honor to be part of that. But I will tell you that there was a sheriff's deputy, Evans police officer, a canine dog, and a guy who makes parks for the city of Greeley. So I was not the most popular person on the panel. But I did tell them that I am famous because our board meetings are videotaped, so they could certainly watch us on YouTube. But it was great, and I really appreciated the opportunity to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. And I don't have a lot to add, as our board members have said. It's been a week where there wasn't a ton that we were doing, but I was able to go to Mamma Mia, and again, that was an excellent show. It's so wonderful to see the arts back and our theater's full. And yeah, that was fantastic. And then also was able to go with fellow board members to Maplewood for that Smart Lab, the opening of that Smart Lab. And I will just point out that those Smart Labs, a lot of them have been, they're done in connection, in conjunction with the Success Foundation. We've had some private donors that have made some very generous gifts to open those. But those are also done with MLO dollars. And so I just, I never want to miss an opportunity to thank our voters for funding our kids. As Mr. Bentley said, those Smart Labs are amazing, what our kids get to do. And we pretty much have those at just about every school. We don't have them in every school now, but we're closing in on just about every school where we have those Smart Labs available. And yeah, it's such a fantastic thing for our students. So I just want to thank again our voters for passing the MLO. And we are now to our work session report. And Ms. Lemon, will you give us our work session report, please?
The work session began with a review of upcoming district events. Legal counsel Nathan Fall provided a legislative update, followed by a review of the book appeal process. The work session concluded with a debrief from the Council of Student Representatives and from each board member.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, we are now to one of those recognitions that I mentioned at the beginning, and that is our Betcher and Daniels Fund Scholars. And Dr. Pilch, I will hand this over to you to introduce.
Thank you, President Matthews. This is a big season for District 6, no question about it. And we are honored to have the numbers of students we have who've been recognized as Daniel Fund Scholars and Betcher Scholars. These are some of the highest awards interns of scholarship that a youngster, a young adult can earn their senior year as they go off to college. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Anthony Osmus, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Leadership, to come up and talk a little bit more about this and to introduce the students and just give our heartfelt congratulations. It's truly, truly an honor. As you all know, I worked in another school district for 12 years prior to coming here. And these two scholarships are the creme de la creme in the state. And to have the numbers of students we have earning them is really quite remarkable. And a big shout out to our teachers, to our administrators, and to the students and their parents, and to the other students who are helping lift these folks up. Because students come alongside each other and support each other. And although one student might be named as that Betcher, that Daniel's Fund Scholar, behind that student are four or five or a dozen more students who have supported them academically, helped them study, and helped them prepare, and helped them to be ready for the world they go into. So thank you very much, Mr. Osmus.
And I'd like to invite our Daniels and our Betcher winners to come up here. And the administrator, who's joining them tonight, and I'll let you work your way up this way while I wait for you. Jilly, come on up. We've got some administrators. Perfect. So President Matthews, members of the board, and Dr. Pilch, it's an honor tonight to celebrate the accomplishments of some of our most outstanding students in the district. As you know, it takes hard work and dedication to be considered for prestigious grant opportunities such as the Daniel Scholarship and the Betcher Scholarship. And tonight, we recognize some outstanding young adults. We're here tonight with some of their principals. I know Aaron Allen is here, Principal, Assistant Principal at Greeley West, and Amy Zuloff, Assistant Principal at Greeley West, and Carrie Smith, the principal at Central, and I saw Kim Silva, the principal at ECA. And thank you all for being here to represent these great students. I think I'll start with the Betcher Scholarship. The scholarship identifies the most dynamic thinkers, doers, and difference makers, and encourages them to stay in Colorado so they can positively impact their communities across the state. That was the thought when the Betcher Scholarship program started, and it's still alive today. More than 1,500 students statewide applied for the Betcher Scholarship. Only 47 received this prestigious honor this year. This is a scholarship that is up to $20,000 for students and for in-state tuition with an effort to try to keep these great people in-state. Four Greeley Evans School District 6 students have been selected as Betcher Scholars by the Betcher Foundation. This year, these scholars are Avon McCall of Greeley Central High School, Dylan Roseman of Early College Academy, Jilly Wong of Greeley Central, and also Kylie Wolf of Greeley Central. And Kylie is not able to be here. She is sick tonight, so we wish her the best. But I'd like to do is ask these three students who are here just to introduce themselves and talk about their future plans. And we'll start with Avon.
Hello, my name is Avon McCall, and like you said, I'm a senior, obviously, at Greeley Central High School. Next year, I'm planning to go to Denver University, or University of Denver, DU, and get my major in English and Language Arts with a minor in Leadership Studies, while also doing the dual enrollment program they have to receive my master's in elementary education and my teacher license. So yeah, I'm super excited. So. I also would just like to say thank you so much to D6 and the board and all of my teachers, because without you guys, I would not have had the opportunities that led me to getting the scholarship. So just a big thank you to all of you guys as well.
Hello, everybody. I'm Dylan Roseman. I'm a senior at Early College Academy. And I remember when I first got the scholarship, I honestly couldn't believe that I had such a big thing in my hand. I remember my mom was crying. I could hardly believe that I had just gotten such a big thing, because it really was a scholarship that I knew would change my life. Because, you know, I was going through night after night, feeling scholarship application after application, thinking like, oh, boy, hopefully I'll maybe get enough to cover my first year. And then this came in the mail, and I was like, oh, my gosh, like, this is it. This is, I don't have to do any more struggles overnight. All the, I know my parents were saying, all those nights that you stayed up doing homework, all the hard work really paid off. And I know I really wanted to thank Dream Team and my principal, all the staff at ECA that really were there for me, because I know 100%, I would not have even known that Betcher had existed without ECA being there for me, without Dream Team being there for me, and without specifically Mariah saying, hey, you got to apply for this, and here's what this is. And oh, my gosh, little did I know, it would be something that would change my life, absolutely. And I can't thank them enough, like, 10 times over. I know I even submitted a thing where they invited me to give back to the people who helped me get there by nominating a teacher. And I know I nominated Professor Howell at my school, and he's dedicated to get this specific award and that my counselor gets an award for helping me get there. And it was just really nice to see the connections that I was making with even like the dean of the Health Sciences College, because my degree that I'm looking to get is the Bachelor's of Science in Health Sciences with Healthcare Administration emphasis, and specifically from UNC. So I'm looking to stay at UNC, but you know, once I got the scholarship, I was like, you know, maybe I'll look a couple of other places, because my options are a little bit bigger. You know? So yeah, thank you. Thank you to the school board. Thank you to everybody. I would think this is a truly wonderful opportunity, and I plan to make the best of it.
I was informed that maybe I said that Jilly and Kylie were from Greeley Central, but I think Jilly had said West, so I'm always right. So we just go with that tonight. So, and Kylie from Greeley West is not here. She is sick, we said. And, but I do, and then our last person for this award is Jilly Wong from Greeley West High School.
Yeah, I'm Jilly Wong from Greeley West, and I'd like to start off by saying, like, it was such an honor to have gotten this scholarship. It wasn't my top priority. Like, I kind of submitted it like last minute, but the process went by, and I was like, every time I made it to the next round, I was super surprised. And till that last moment, like, when I got the letter in the mail, and I thought, this letter was too big to be a rejection letter, and it wasn't. And so, like, I'd like to thank, like, those before me, like, all the letter of recs, all the people that put effort into, like, helping me get this scholarship, and like, how much encouragement it took from them to, like, get me here. And I'm really grateful for that. As for my future plans, I'm thinking about being a city planner, so I'll be majoring in urban studies. As for the college, potentially CU Boulder, but I'm also thinking out of state. And so at least I have Betcher, which I'm still very grateful for. And yeah, I just have options. So, thank you.
And then the Daniels. The Daniel Scholarship awards students with great potential, strong character, and big dreams. Daniel Scholars are America's next generation of leaders preserving through life's challenges and rooted in the values important to Bill Daniels. They are free and entrepreneurial thinkers who are proud of this country and their community and work hard to improve it. The scholarship pays tuition up to $100,000 for these students, so $100,000 towards college and not just in Colorado. So it's a very large scholarship as well. So four Greeley Evans students who will graduate may have been notified that they will receive the prestigious Daniel Scholarship. The District 6 Daniel Scholarship recipients for 2023 are Haley Walter, Early College Academy, Kylie Wolf, Greeley West High School, Raymond Castillo from Frontier Academy, and Rhiannon Hampton from University High School. As we said, Kylie is sick tonight, so she can't be here. Raymond, who's in the musical at Frontier, so he's very busy, he can't be here. And Rhiannon has another engagement as well. And you don't get to really be here if you're not really involved in lots of different things, so we totally get that. But we do have Haley here. If we could have her come and talk about, introduce herself and her future plans.
Hi, like they said, I am Haley Walter. I go to Early College Academy, and I earn the Daniel's Fund, and I am extremely grateful for all of the people that have, can kind of push me to be the person I am and be able to earn this extreme honor that I was able to accomplish. I want to specifically thank my principal, Kim Silva, and my academic advisor, Mindy Marshall. They have been the most helpful and encouraging people throughout this process. Mrs. Marshall has been one of the best people that I have met at my school, and she's definitely a big part of my life and helped me accomplish all of my scholarship endeavors. And then just all of my professors and faculty at ECA has really been a huge help to get where I am. I plan to go to the University of Colorado, Colorado Springs, and will be getting a business degree with an emphasis in sports management. So just hope engage myself in the sports world along with the business side of it. So, thank you, guys, everyone.
And this is available for any questions or comments. Ms. Pappas.
Congratulations to all of you, of course, and it's so nice to have you all here tonight. I do also just want to say that, well, I don't know if I should, but Council of Student Reps has quite a large representation in this group of students. So I will, Jilly, Avon, Dylan, and then Ramos, who couldn't be here tonight. So thank you all for participating in that as well. Your voice is important to the school board and to the district. And then I also want to thank the people that, I know I was part of mock interviews that Elizabeth Barber from the Dream Team organized. So I just want to put a huge shout out to her and just offering the opportunity for students to have that mock interview opportunity. And then all of the adults in your lives, you know, the staff, the teachers, the principals, your families. I mean, this is huge. This is a huge deal. So thank you all for being here, and congratulations to all of you, and we wish you the very, very best of luck.
President Matthews, Dr. Brenda Campos Spitsy would like to speak.
Dr. Campos Spitsy.
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate you guys as well. What a huge honor, and you're making D6 very, very proud. We, like, so I interview students to come into residency at our program, and when we see Betcher on there, that's like, you get raised all the way to the top of our list. So, but I heard teachers, business administrators, sports managers, city planners, healthcare administrators from some of your career goals. And I just want to say that our future looks really bright. Congratulations, guys.
I don't see any other comments, but I will add my congratulations to you guys as well. Because I know, yeah, I know a couple of you personally, and I know how hard you work. I know what this means for you and what it means for your families. And again, we could not be more proud of your accomplishment. And as Ms. Pappas said, thank you. I know we have some school counselors in the bag as well. And I know those school counselors are specifically important for this award and making sure that you guys are hitting those deadlines. So again, congratulations to you. Thank you to the adults in your life and we're very, very proud of you. And we're going to take a picture? All right. Next up on our agenda, we have our Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching Finalists. And again, Dr. Pilch, I'll give it to you to introduce this one.
Thank you, President Matthews. Well, we have said it, but we don't have students who turn out like the young people you just met without amazing educators behind each one of them, supporting them. And we get to recognize one of those educators tonight. And it just so happens that she is at Early College Academy. We get to recognize Ms. Sydney Cerise, and this is quite the award. We have not had a teacher in District Six receive this award since 1997. So with that, I'm going to introduce again to you Mr. Anthony Osmus. And I know he wants to invite up Ms. Silva, the principal from Early College Academy, and Ms. Sydney Cerise.
And Mr. Fisher.
And Mr. Fisher, please.
President Matthews, once again, we're here to represent just excellence. A strong teacher can have a profound impact on the lives of students and that is so evident in Miss cerise. From improving academic performance to fostering a love of learning, building confidence, building character, and just preparing our students for the future. We have so many great teachers in this district, but tonight, Kim Silva, our principal at ECA, and John Fisher, our district math coordinator, will introduce an excellent teacher that we have at ECA. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Fisher.
Good evening. The Presidential Award for Academic, or the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching is the highest award given in our nation for math teachers. It's given in conjunction between the National Science Foundation and the White House every year. And each state gets to send one to three teachers forward for national consideration. Those are the state finalists. The state, one of our state finalists this year from Colorado is Sydney Cerise at ECA. CDE is pretty clear that this, even being named a finalist in Colorado is the highest honor that we have for a math teacher in the state of Colorado. So we just want to, there, like Mr. Osmus said, there's a lot of teachers doing incredible work in our system, but it's really nice to see one get some formal public recognition. And I'll turn over to Ms. Silva to explain a little bit more about Sydney.
Thank you, John, and thank you for honoring Sydney tonight. She, I get the opportunity to work with Sydney at ECA and she is just an incredible teacher. This is an incredibly prestigious award and she is incredibly deserving. So we're also very proud of her. I have worked with her for a couple of years at ECA and she has made me a better instructional leader, for sure. And so I'm grateful to her for that. And, you know, I think some of the things that I would highlight is she plans for the most incredible experiences for her kids every day in her classroom. She holds an incredibly high bar for them to meet and they meet that, they meet that bar. And I think most importantly, it's because of the environment that she creates. The students in her classroom know that they can engage in complex math and do so successfully every single day in her classroom. So we're so incredibly proud of her at ECA. I'm so incredibly proud of her. I also would note that Sydney doesn't just teach in our school. I should say just, that's, she is involved in many committees. She's on Instructional Leadership Team. She co-facilitates student council. She's on Professional Development Council. She's, I could continue to go on and on. She creates bell schedules for me if I need some help. She doesn't really tell me no. And she's just such an asset to our profession and we're really proud of her. And I wanted to hand it over to her and see if she would like to say something.
I just want to say it's such an honor to represent District Six and ECA. I have no idea what's going to come next with this, but I would like to thank you guys for giving me the resources and opportunities to make me the teacher I am. I do want to thank a few people. I want to thank John Fisher for nominating me for this award. I want to thank Mara Dudley, Kim Silva, and Jerry Guzman for writing me letters of rec for this. I want to thank George for videotaping me and getting that all ready for me as well. And then Amanda Krieger for editing all my papers and everything that was submitted. So thank you again for everything that you support our teachers. It really works and I have the great opportunity to teach my students. Thank you.
Well, we may have a few comments or questions for you, Ms. cerise, but I'll just start off and say, just as Dr. Pilch said, that, you know, we don't have outstanding students in this district. By accident, we have outstanding students, because we have some really incredible teachers. And we say it all the time, that you cannot be average in this district. We do not have average teachers in this district. The challenges are too great. And when you stand out, when you get nominated from among your, because I know personally a lot of those math teachers at Greeley Central and Greeley West, and those are the ones I know. I'm sure there's some great math teachers at Northridge and our other high schools as well. But those are the ones I know and I know to stand out among those teachers says a lot. And so congratulations to you for your great accomplishment.
Thank you.
Ms. Pappas.
I just want to say congratulations as well. And we have had the honor of walking through your classroom a couple of times. And I can just say that just looking at the work on the board was a little overwhelming. But the fact that all, I mean, the way that you engaged your students even in those walkthroughs and just knowing that they were engaged, learning at that high level, like Ms. Silva said, just that high bar. We appreciate you and we thank you for being a part of District Six and congratulations. And thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up on our agenda, we have our Council of Student Representatives report. So I'd like to invite our Council of Student Representatives forward to bring us your report.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Pilch. I'm Aaron Allen. I'm one of the co-leaders of the Council of Student Reps and I'm also the incoming principal for Northridge High School. It's a great honor to introduce four of the students that we have here. Jashelle, Brian, Eliana, and Luke. They recently, as part of their duties of the council, is they met with Danielle Bach and they had the opportunity to share some of their insights with her. And then also, they've been planning a dodgeball tournament so that we can get all of our high schools together. In addition to that, with me and my new position, I've been going over to Northridge High School and I get to see these friendly faces as I walk around and meet people and find out about the school. Several of them are in the STEM program and you've seen Brian before, because he's part of the JROTC program. They are an outstanding group of students and I'll have them present to you now.
Good afternoon. My name is Jashelle Tolid. I'm a junior at Northridge High School and I'm involved in the STEM program and Performing Arts Department. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. So last semester, Northridge was able to create an official theater program and produce a collection of small plays centered around bullying and spreading kindness. Although it had been a small production with limited budget and time to prepare, we're proud of where the theater program has started. Because of time restrictions, unfortunately, the theater program hasn't been able to do a spring musical production. However, we're excited to see where it goes if Northridge continues to hold this opportunity for their students. Also within Performing Arts is the Northridge Music Department, which has become a big growing program within the school. Our director, Mr. Wilkinson, has definitely built up this program so much since he started teaching at Northridge. Many opportunities opened up to students through band, orchestra, choir classes, which included earning a few excellent plaques at festival, attending festival, being able to play with other musicians at All City and Combined League, and gaining that social aspect that other sorts of classes just don't have. That being said, Northridge's Performing Arts program has their final concert on May 4th. So if you're able to attend and support and see how far we've come, we'd love to have you. Although music and performing art electives are often overlooked by students at our school, being a STEM program, academy, sorry, these types of classes are a great opportunity to experience performing and being in front of an audience or group of people. We've seen student involvement grow within our school exponentially, so it's super exciting to see students interested in the various opportunities provided by our school. Through theater, choir, orchestra, and band, students gain professionalism, collaboration, creativity, resourcefulness, teamwork, empathy, the ability to count, and so many other social and mental skills. Not only that, the students have done a great job in building a welcoming environment and community where we're all able to share our passion in performing and music. The connections made between the students and teachers are definitely something else. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen and giving me the opportunity to speak and represent Northridge. Here's Eliana.
Hello, my name is Eliana Sisneros and I'm a junior at Northridge High School. Today, I will be talking to you all about our National Honor Society. National Honor Society is a program that creates opportunities for dedicated students and helps build leadership. There are two ways to get into National Honor Society. First, you can get invited and second, you can sign up. In order to get accepted into National Honor Society, you need to have a minimum of a 3.5 GPA and also get two letters of recommendation from two different teachers. In order to stay in National Honor Society, you need to maintain this 3.5 GPA as well as attend meetings regularly, have 15 hours of individual community service, have 10 hours of group community service, and participate in a minimum of two fundraising activities. Our National Honor Society has came a long way considering that our two previous teachers have moved on with the new chapters in their life. We have just gotten a new teacher this year. Being a new member, I can speak from experience that National Honor Society helps you stay on track, build leadership, as well as confidence, and brings you a step closer to your future. It's also fun and engaging, especially with our community service experiences. Our most recent community service was at Covers where we had a share day where from 5 to 8, we got 10% of their funds. We got to serve customers, help clean up, and we also got to work the cash register. Of course, with good comes bad. After speaking with Ms. Davis about this, we talked about some of the improvements that we could do. Our biggest improvement would probably have to be getting more community service hours for, or community service opportunities, excuse me. We've only had a few this year, but we hope for more in the future. Our next room for improvement, I believe, would probably be the Moreland National Honor Society. After speaking with Ms. Davis, she said that a lot of students don't really want to be in the program, which I honestly find kind of sad, because it builds, it builds, sorry, it builds opportunities and it has many benefits. Even if you decide not to go to college, you still get leadership skills, build relationships, and it gives back to the community. I hope you all understand one of the many glows and groves of Northridge. Thank you all for your time.
All right, first off, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of my school. I also want to thank you for asking everyone to stand as you open today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. It was nice to see everyone standing and I think it sets a good example for everyone watching this meeting. Now, it pains me to see that the same respect displayed for this country and flag are not always shown at my school. I feel like one of the reasons students don't stand for the pledge is due to a lack of patriotism. Today, people talk about unity and coming together and I feel like patriotism is a great way to unite everyone under a common cause. Now, I'm not saying you have to like everything about the United States, but there are a heck of a lot of reasons to appreciate and respect our flag and the greatest country in the world that it represents. Now, although my school does struggle with patriotism, I believe it has started to take a step in the right direction. Northridge does this by starting the school day with the Pledge of Allegiance and beginning every assembly with the color guard provided by the JRTC program. I actually wanted to touch on the JRTC program here at our school and how it shows our students and staff why patriotism is so important. For instance, it gives students who are in the program a sense of pride and purpose, encouraging cadets to think for themselves and develop life skills. It also educates them about the history of America, which helps cadets develop respect for the sacrifices made to preserve our freedom. I think if more schools were to instill and incorporate the same things the JRTC program does at my school, they would benefit greatly. Just like what the program does for our cadets, more students would find a common cause and purpose in life. Once again, I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here today.
Hi, I'm Luke Corning and I'm a junior at Northridge and I'll be covering the STEM program today. So with our STEM program, we have a lot of unique opportunities for many students to go through and try different things out. For example, I am part of the Engineering Department of our STEM program. And with this, we get to go through and we get to build and work on our engineering skills along with start to learn certain things like how to computer design through SolidWorks or Revit, which really helps us get comparative advantage against other students who do engineering in colleges, because we already know how to do certain things. Along with all our new STEM stuff coming in with the remodel for the school, which will help out the technology and engineering, because we'll have new areas to work in and have better technology to do said work. And one thing that we could possibly grow on for our STEM program is probably just get more funding for the capstone projects, because some people, they get quite a bit and others not as much. And I have feeling that's due to lack of communication or just people not being able to say other things, because I know some people have other programs that they get money from. And also, some things that are coming up from our STEM program pretty soon is the Northridge Blood Drive, which will be happening May 4th from 8:30 to, wait, no, 9 to 3:30, along with our award night coming up on May 3rd. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, guys, for being here tonight. We appreciate your presence and the time that it takes. We know that this is a busy time of year for all of our students and I'm sure you have other things you could be doing. Wait, I'm waiting just for a second to see if there are any questions or comments from our board members for any of you. And I think we have at least one from Ms. Mash.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming. I love the way that the Council of Student Representatives presentations work, where it's just a highlight of one school and we get to hear all the things that you're proud of, all the areas that maybe you could grow. And so, thank you for highlighting the ROTC program, the arts, the STEM program, and just thank you for being here.
And I don't see any other questions for you guys. I'll let you go. But I do have one more. It's May 4th is the blood drive. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
May 4th at 8:30 to?
9 to 3:30.
9 to 3:30, okay. Just so everybody knows, if you want to give blood, Northridge, 9 to 3:30 on May 4th. Thank you, guys, again, for being here tonight. We appreciate it. We are now to our superintendent's report. So, Dr. Pilch, would you be so kind as to give us your report?
Thank you, President Matthews. And I am going to just stick to one topic tonight and introduce those newest members to our district leadership team, who hopefully you all will be approving tonight. So pending your approval tonight in the personnel report on the consensus agenda, these five individuals who I'm going to introduce to you will become new district level administrator, or district leadership team members here in the district. So you all are aware that as people retire, you mentioned Molly McCall and Lori McCarty. We have hired their replacements and I'll introduce them tonight. We've also hired folks to move into some of the positions that have opened up at our high school. So first, I want to introduce to you our new Health Services Coordinator, Jennifer M. Clark. Jennifer, are you here? There you are, Jennifer. There you are. So if you want to just stay standing, let us all stare at you, make you a little uncomfortable. That's perfect. We are so fortunate. Jennifer has been here in District Six since 2016. She has over 23 years of experience in healthcare, working in lots of different roles. She first came to the district as a certified health screener and then she served as a registered nurse for us here in the district, starting in 2019. She has earned the respect and trust of her colleagues and I know they're excited to have her to step into this leadership role where she will coordinate all of our school nurse consultants in the district. Ms. Clark? Ms. Clark obtained her Bachelor's of Science in Nursing and, um, is working on her Master's Degree, which I understand will be done in May, so that's very exciting when you're coming up on that, in healthcare management. Both of her degrees are from Western Governors University, and, uh, again, congratulations, Jennifer, pending the board's approval, we welcome you to our district leadership team. So with the hiring of Erin Allen as the principal at Northridge, and Amy Zuloff as the principal of Central, and with Ryan Hilbig leaving us to move closer to home, we have had, been hiring some assistant principals at Greeley West High School. So I want to introduce those folks to you. First, I want to introduce to you Kyle Applehans, who comes to us from out of district. Kyle, are you here?
Yeah.
He's waving in the back there. Hi, Kyle, welcome. Uh, we're excited to have Kyle. He has actually started his career in the Thompson School District, um, in 2013, teaching mathematics, but we're most recently swiping him from, uh, my friend over in the Platt Valley School District where he has taught middle school and high school mathematics and science both. Um, my understanding is he's quite the mathematician and scientist, and, and we're really fortunate to have him coming. Uh, he brings 10 years of educational experience with him. He has a Bachelor's in Mathematics and a Master's of Natural Science Education, both earned from Colorado State University, and he has earned his principal licensure from Colorado State University. So really excited to have you, um, and thanks for being here tonight, Kyle, so we could The next two folks I'm going to introduce you are some of our own that we're bringing up from right here inside our school district. Bridget Kaler, assistant, uh, is recommended for assistant principal at Greeley West High School. Bridget, standing there next to Kyle. So Bridget, um, has been serving as our International Baccalaureate Coordinator at Greeley West for the last couple of years, um, and she came to us with some really interesting background. She started her teaching at Pathfinder Education as a social studies teacher, and then she taught in Costa Rica, uh, and then came from Costa Rica back to the United States after five years of teaching there and, uh, came to Greeley West as the International Baccalaureate Coordinator and Teacher at Greeley West. Uh, she obtained her Bachelor's of Arts in Social Sciences and History and a Master's of Ed in Curriculum and Instruction and a Master's in Ed Leadership, all from Dome University. Uh, so big Dome fan, I'm guessing. Yeah, everything at Dome. Uh, so congratulations, Bridget, and welcome to the new position you'll obtain in District And I see standing next to you back there in the corner, your other new colleague, JJ Behrens. JJ has been with us here in District 6, most recently as the Dean of Students and our Head Wrestling Coach, um, but prior to that, JJ has served in several districts as, um, a special educator and a wrestling coach. He's been at Ray High School, he's been at Sterling High School, um, and, and at Chaparral High School, and I will just tell you, um, oh, and at Gearing High School. Spent quite a bit of your time in Nebraska at Gearing High School as a coach and teacher. And I will just tell you, I think he has found a home because he was coaching for us and teaching for us in the Special Education Department, and then moved into the dean position, and, and he has accepted this role as Assistant Principal Athletic Director. So we're really excited to have you, uh, take this role, JJ. And then finally, we'll talk about the littles and, uh, the newest support for some of our, our youngest students in the district. With the retirement of Molly McCall at Shawshin, we, we are, um, offering a position to Andrea Spohletter as Assistant Principal at Shawshin. She comes to us, thank you, Andrea, she comes to us from the Windsor School District, uh, and we're so excited to have you come. With elementary teaching experience at Range View, um, and then, um, experience as well at Severance Middle School as, as an instructional coach or a learning coach, uh, she came a little late into education. She had a career first in business and in banking and really wanted to make a difference. And what we saw in her in her interview was her heart and her heart for children, and I can see completely why she left banking after interviewing her. So, um, she has, but she has, um, over 12 years of experience in education, and we're really fortunate to have her. She's got, has a Bachelor's Degree in Business Marketing, um, and, um, from Central State, Colorado State University, sorry, Colorado State, um, but then she also earned her Master's of Elementary Ed and a Master's of Administration from the University of Northern Colorado. So congratulations, Andrea, and welcome to District 6. We are almost fully staffed up. Uh, we are still doing interviews for a few of our district leadership team positions, but we're getting closer and closer to being fully staffed and just really excited about our hiring season, and especially excited when we can bring people up from within and continue to grow our own, and also love stealing from my neighbors around us, so. Welcome to the district, folks.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. We're now to our public participation. The board welcomes the comments of community members and has dedicated a portion of each business meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments to the board. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. The board typically does not engage in discussion or provide an immediate response to the input, but will ask district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to our Board Secretary, Ms. Lemon, and not to individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect and expects all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and speakers' remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. All speakers and those in attendance shall conduct themselves in a non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comments. With that read, our first speaker tonight is Ms. Stacy Castillo. Ms. Castillo's a parent of student, or students enrolled in District 6. Welcome, Ms. Castillo. Thank you for being here tonight. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. SEL is in all of the upcoming curriculum that we just had the opportunity to review. SEL, or Social Emotional Learning, is being pushed by the district, yet our students aren't behaving in any bit of a better way. In fact, some would say they're behaving worse. The district spent $77,000 for the 22-23 school year on panorama surveys that push SEL by looking at mental health of our students and trying to push a cultural divide and isolate which kids need more to be career and college ready. If SEL is working, why do we have stabbings and gang violence on campuses? If SEL is working, why do we have threats against our school to the point that on, on one certain day, only 60% of the students showed up because they were scared? If SEL was working, why do we have kids allegedly threatening to rape other students? While we look at educational materials as a whole, Beloved has been deemed an acceptable book that, by the Book Review Committee, because of the literary value. However, the N-word is dropped so many times that children are becoming desensitized to it. Mix that with rap music, and it is taking away the damage that this word truly does cause. Isn't SEL supposed to develop healthy identities, empathy for others, while making responsible and caring decisions? Is calling someone the N-word or threatening to rape someone a caring decision to show empathy towards others? Whose mental wellness is benefiting from this? I urge for us to stop wasting money and time on SEL and seriously consider the outcomes of SEL because the impact it is causing is not a positive one. And we need to focus our time and attention on changing legislation to help our security team.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Next tonight, we have Ms. Ellen Foster. Ms. Foster is a resident of District 6. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Foster.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
You'll have two minutes.
My son was born with Treacher-Collins Syndrome. Among other things, this caused him to have facial anomalies and bilateral hearing loss. He completed two years of special ed preschool and a year of Head Start, so I thought kindergarten would be smooth sailing. At the time, his kindergarten had two full-day sessions a week. A few weeks into the year, he began throwing up in the morning before school. Took a few days before it dawned on me that this was only happening on his school days, not on his daycare days. One of the hardest things for me to do as a parent was to tell him, "Finish throwing up, and then we're going to school." It turns out there was another student in his classroom with significant behavioral issues. For whatever reason, his facial differences, his hearing loss, or just because, he targeted my son more than the other children. My son was unable to clearly communicate this to me. The teacher was fabulous and did everything she could, but the other child was eventually, after several months, removed from the classroom and placed in an alternative setting. This experience really underscored the value for me of an anti-bullying program. It would have helped my child deal with the other child's aggression, given the other student skills to be an ally, and helped the child to self-regulate his behavior. I know that the district is previewing an anti-bullying curriculum. I also know that there are folks who will look through it with a magnifying glass to pick out the tiniest of details with which they disagree, while ignoring the overall goals, methods, and purposes of the program. Please know that I represent many who see the value of this type of program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Ms. Allison Hamling. Ms. Hamling is a resident of District 6. Welcome, Ms. Hamling. Thank you for being here tonight, and you will have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. I am the daughter of educators, a 35-year resident, and a parent of two avid readers and graduates from Greeley Central and UNC. I speak from my role as a resident and citizen, none other. New York Times bestselling author Meg Medina said, "To pull books from a school library because of the discomfort they create in adults is a recipe for disaster. It erodes the trust young people have in the adults in their lives and pushes them to secrecy. It undermines the studied opinion of professional librarians and educators. It supports a false idea that there's one version of life that's acceptable, and it denigrates the work of authors who are brave enough to name experiences that are difficult and real. Diverse books by definition center on the experience of people who are not dominant in society, and it's not surprising that these stories will often include experiences that make the reader uncomfortable in some way. Involved parents can discuss a child's reading choices with them, or even read a book before they are sure they're, before, to make sure they're emotionally ready for the content. If a book or part of a book questions your values, it invites a discussion with them about why it does. As sometimes banned author Jodi Picoult says, 'There's nothing wrong with a parent deciding that a certain book is not right for their child. There's a colossal problem with a parent deciding that therefore no child should be allowed to read that book.' Censorship seeks to protect you from reality, is the hallmark of authoritarian regime, and in the long run of history, censors always come down on the wrong side. Please think for yourselves and let others do the same."
Thank you, Ms. Hamling. Next tonight, we have Mr. Stephen Grant. Mr. Grant's a resident of District 6. Welcome, Mr. Grant. Thank you for being here tonight, and you'll have two minutes.
Good evening. Thank you, board. Tonight, we will be discussing a book by Toni Morrison titled Beloved. I did not, um, sign one of the forms requesting that it be removed, but I do object. Tonight, you, the elected representatives of us, will be called to decide on that book. I was specifically told by you, Mr. Matthews, and you, Dr. Pilch, that I would not be included on the Book Review Committee because of my views and my moral objections as a pastor and as a leader here in the community. But there are others that sit on that community, and I know a few of them, and they were picked in the beauty contest to represent what you want and the desired outcome you feel that education should have. I know that firsthand because of meetings with you. It's selective morality. Now, the protests about these books originated locally. They are supported by statements out of Florida and out of other states who pulled the quotes that were read by some people. We know that, but listen, the opposition to these books originated locally, not nationally. This is not a part of a national agenda. Furthermore, the state does not control children, parents do. We do not co-parent with the state. We are the parents, and we want these books out, and we do object. These books do fulfill federal obscenity laws. They are obscene. You will not allow us to discuss sex with animals, or forcible rape, or other things in this because you want a G-rated, you want a G-rated meeting and yet have X-rated libraries in schools. I object. We continue to stand against these. I am this community, and I object to these books in our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Next tonight, we have Ms. Christine Talbot. Welcome, Ms. Talbot. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I am also this community, and I have three primary points. First, when I was growing up, I read voraciously. Everything. I was profoundly disturbed, turned upside down, and even traumatized by some of what I read. One of those, by the way, was Toni Morrison's Beloved. These experiences prepared me to adjust and respond to the profoundly disturbing, traumatizing, and upside-down world we live in. Second, what book banners seek to control is already widely available on the internet, already in all of our homes. To censor books that name those experiences is to blame those authors for the lives they More importantly, all of our children are already being greeted by the disturbing, traumatized, upside-down world you and I will leave them. To the extent that book banning succeeds in restricting their access to information, our children are likely to be unprepared to be, to responsibly respond. Third, public education is just that, public. It belongs not to partisan interests, not to vocal minorities, and frankly, not even to parents. It belongs to the public. I am a member of that public. It is all of our responsibility to co-create its vision of what constitutes education. Censorship is not education, it is partisan book banning that has no place in a public education. The job of public education is to prepare young people to adjust to a world that will disturb them. It will likely traumatize them. It is to prepare children to engage productively with those disturbances, with that trauma, and to do their part to right-size the world, to right-side up the world again, whatever that means to them. By shielding our children from these experiences, we set them up for failure. I implore you, let our children be disturbed by books. Let them succeed at it. A future that is hopefully less disturbed, less traumatized, and less upside-down will thank you for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Talbot. Next tonight, we have Ms. Maria Foster. Welcome, Ms. Foster. Thank you for being here tonight. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. In first grade, I learned the story about the pilgrims and the first Thanksgiving. I was taught that the pilgrims came to this land for religious freedom. That made sense to me as I lived in a religiously diverse neighborhood. A Jewish family lived next door, a Mormon family lived behind us, the Catholic family lived down the block. On Sundays, my mom went to the Presbyterian church while my dad attended the Unitarian church. Capital letter, big concept, religious freedom, was a great idea. But in high school, I did a much deeper dive into American history and learned that the early European settlers were not interested in the concept of religious freedom for everyone. Although they were fleeing religious persecution, when they arrived here, they established their colonies with their version of Christianity as the de facto religion, and those who attempted to worship differently were either jailed or exiled from the colony. I see a lot of parallels with the discussion today around parental rights in school. Capital letter, big concept, parental rights is a fine idea, where every parent can provide input into the education of their student. But what I see is that there are people who are not necessarily interested in every parent's opinion, but are just interested in making their opinion the standard for everyone. I support the district's policy of allowing any parent to restrict access to books or materials that they feel are inappropriate for their student. I do not support the position that the books or materials should be restricted for every student just because there are a few who do not want their students to access them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Mr. Bruce Berderius. Dr. Bruce Berderius. Dr. Bruce Bradarius. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Bradari... Dr. Bradarius.
Thank you for allowing me and others to speak to you this evening. It's a privilege. We live in the United States of America. That's a privilege also. I'd like to reflect on the fact that some years ago, as a teacher, I was selected to be on a controversial instructional materials committee for Denver Public Schools. I say that only to tell you, no, I'm not a newcomer to this particular set of discussions. I also shared with you an op-ed piece from the Colorado Sun that gave a younger person's perspective of board opportunities and challenges and the responsibilities of two districts in El Paso County. The title of the op-ed piece was "Parents' Rights: Campaigns Are Political Theater." I thought that was enough disturbing things to share with you. I want to tell you, there is no difference between people who cannot read, people that refuse to read, and people that refuse to think about what they read. It's all the same. The absence or the dispenishment of knowledge is all accomplished by the same thing. Those that can read will most likely make informed decisions about their personal life and the community they live in. I think that is why you do not select books for individuals. Individuals select books for themselves, and that should be done with this school district. I think you have one of the most defendable and reliable procedures to review and select instructional materials. I congratulate you on that.
Thank you, Dr. Bradarius. I appreciate you... I appreciate you being here tonight.
Page two will go into hidden history.
Next up tonight, we have Mr. Bob Stack. Is Mr. Stack here?
Yes.
See you in the back there. Welcome, Mr. Stack. Mr. Stack is a resident of District Six.
Excuse me, I was being courteous. 398-13. Remember those numbers for a couple of minutes. My purpose tonight is to challenge you, as a board, to step forward boldly, in a new manner, in a new role, and take the lead in making gun safety laws and outlawing assault rifles. This isn't taking away your Second Amendment. This is not taking away your guns. How to stand, could be calling, or should be calling, your elected officials time and time and time again, be they local, state, regional, or national. One call, one text won't do it. See yourself in this new role, connecting CASB, which you're already part of, other organizations, the plumber union... You can stand up and serve as a national model. I used to tell my students, no matter what else is going on, we set the example. You won't be alone for long. There'll be others joining you. The time is right. I don't want to just throw words out in the air, and if you saw the news today, what's going to happen next week? But you can do this. You can stand as a single light. Case in point, several years ago, I brought together a group called the Courthouse Steps. We protested, we helped others for 48 straight months. Again, I challenge you to stand up, speak up, be visible. Make things happen.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. Next tonight, we have Ms. Maggie Reinsfeld. Thank you, Ms. Reinsfeld. Thank you for being here tonight, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Dr. Maggie Reinsfeld. I'm a local physician, a resident and an aunt of two wonderful girls who live here in District Six. I'm also a product of this education. I graduated, was educated through the District Six system. I credit my journey here in Greeley as the inspiration and motivation to pursue medicine, public health, and work towards creating a healthy community for all. Looking back, I can credit many teachers, educated mentors, into my development, but few classes and teachers were particularly influential. As a high school senior, I took AP Government with Mrs. Switzer at Greeley Central High School, where I applied critical lessons and critical thinking with respectful debate to not only learn, but analyze and apply the lessons of the U.S. Constitution and American civics to current issues facing our country and democracy. None seems as paramount as this time is our First Amendment right to freedom of speech and expression, a constitutional right, I might add, for our students regarding this very issue of restricting books that was held up by the U.S. Supreme Court in 1982 with the Board versus Education versus PICO. I credit the liberty and freedom I had as a student in District Six to pursue all types of knowledge and think critically for myself as foundational to my success, both in school and my career. Restricting this constitutional right to students now through the attempt of restricting or censoring books, such as Toni Morrison's "Beloved," restricts their access to, yes, the ugly, but also the beloved literature that we have here in the United States that has shaped American culture, morality, integrity, and freedom, and seems antithetical to the lessons I learned from the U.S. Constitution and AP Government all those years ago. I intentionally return to Greeley to work in the community that influenced me so greatly, and implore you all, as board members, to represent us here and respect my First Amendment right and the students today.
Thank you, Ms... Dr. Reinsfeld.
Thank you.
Next tonight, we have Ms. Judy Crone. Ms. Crone's a resident of District Six. Welcome. Thank you. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm Judy Crone, a resident in Greeley and a strong supporter of the work this school and administration do to educate our children. I come before you tonight to speak about the book appeal process. While I applaud your work to listen to the concerns of all and think the process you have set up is fair, I am saddened by the need to do so and the events that have led up to tonight's review. The time and effort staff is putting into this effort at the insistence of a small but vocal group is regrettable. Book banning has been around for centuries, but in my opinion, never is a good thing. I agree that parents should have a say in what their children read, but should not have the right to decide what all other parents' children read. How about talking with your children's teacher about an alternative book if your children... if your child has been assigned a book you don't want them to read? To those of you so unhappy with this board and district, Greeley Evans has many options for parents to have input into their children's learning. District Six has open enrollment. Greeley Evans has several private schools, and homeschooling is an option with numerous support programs for parents. Please, please, quit harassing this board with your limited perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crone. Next tonight, we have Ms. Candace Sawyer. Ms. Sawyer's a resident of District Six. Good evening. Thank you, and you'll have two minutes.
First of all, I'd like to let you all know, because apparently you guys don't listen. We're not asking for banning of books. We're asking for parental consent, first and foremost. So I want to clarify that yet again for the last year and a half that we've been discussing this. Secondly, I just want to talk a little bit about the letters that went out. There was one letter that went out to the people who filled out those complaints, and then there's the district committee recommendation, which you cannot find. If you go to the district website and you try to look for this information, the policies are not there. It's a game, and you can't find it. Anyway, one of the things that was in your recommendation is, "The book includes passages depicting mature content addressed in the complaint forms." For example, "The book contains a few passages which cover themes such as sodomy, abuse, graphic sexual content, rape, bestiality, nudity, and sexual excitement. The committee recognizes reading these particular passages elicited sadness and discomfort. It is not okay for a school district to knowingly elicit feelings of sadness and discomfort in students, and it is inappropriate for a school district to knowingly provide materials to students that admittedly contain those very things: sodomy, abuse, graphic sexual content, rape, bestiality, nudity, and sexual excitement, especially through K-8 students." In district libraries, this was the other point you had, there might not always be a safe person or staff member available to process the mature content and what might trigger students through their own lived experiences with "Beloved." District Six librarians and staff do not possess the right, the training, or the licensure to navigate what may or may not trigger a negative reaction from providing obscene materials to children under their care. Furthermore, the parent is the person who knows their child best. It is more often than not the safe person in their child's life and is responsible for what their children are exposed to and the potential consequences. District Six is replacing parental decision-making by allowing "Beloved" to be accessed without informed parental consent. Number three, "Beloved" was difficult to read due to heavy content and left an enduring impression.
Thank you, Ms. Sawyer.
Do something and make it right.
Next tonight, we have Ms. Stephanie Mora. Ms. Mora is an employee of District Six. So welcome, Ms. Mora. Thank you for being here tonight, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you so much. I'm going to switch gears a little bit. My colleague Nicole and I are going to talk about some amazing work that's being done at Hyman because of a lot of support that we've gotten over the last year and a half. So we want to celebrate our Husky Hub, which is a community pantry that we have created in our building with a lot of support, like I said. So I wanted to talk about that support just a little bit, and then she's going to talk a little bit more about what we offer. First of all, I am our staff wellness champion at Hyman, and I love that. It connects me with our community and our staff in a different way. But I do want to say that Liz Stockham is our new food pantry specialist, and she's incredible. She came in and turned our idea, where we took what we had and we made something workable, into something beautiful and shoppable and wonderful for families to feel welcome when they walk in. I also want to shout out to Johanna Bishop, Rachel Hirschman, and the entire nutrition team for all of their constant support in everything that we need, problem-solving, if we feel like we have leftover food that's fresh, without enough space. They've come up with a lot of ideas to help us with that and engage our community, so it's been wonderful. Lastly, I do want to say that United Way has supported us by providing diapers and other baby materials, like wipes and creams and things, so that families can walk in and just feel like they are secure, they are safe, their kids are taken care of. And they also provided us with funding to get a washer and dryer installed, brand-new, and they paid for the installation, so it was something that we could just kind of take a breath on. So I just want to say thank you for all of your district's support and the supportive nutrition services. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Mora. Next tonight, we have Ms. Nicole Cox. She's also an employee of District Six. Welcome, Ms. Cox. Thank you for being here, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Yes, I'm a first-grade teacher at Hyman Elementary and just wanted to come and, yes, talk about our Husky Hub and just share some of the incredible work that we're able to do at our school. This has been something that we wanted to start for a very long time, and we've been very fortunate this year that it has been able to come to fruition. A lot of what Stephanie talked about is our community partners, that we could not have done it without them. But we... With the Husky Hub, it's a place that families can come to receive food, clothing, diapers, wipes, as well as other community support. We are grateful for the hard work of our family liaison, Stacy, who is here tonight. So thank you, Stacy, for all of your many hours that she spends out in the Husky Hub to ensure access for all. Most recently, we were able to secure the grant with Weld County, with United Way, for our washer and dryer, which has been an amazing addition for our families to have access to that. It just really is enabling them to reduce the worries of access to basic necessities like clean clothing. And so that has been amazing. We're also working with the Success Foundation and also our Nutrition Services Department for our food pantry. We are so thankful. Over spring break, we also received brand-new refrigeration and food storage, and so that's been really awesome for our Husky Hub. Each month, we have both new and returning families, and often our families are referred to by the office or other teachers that are ready and willing to help and support our families and their needs. It has also just created a new level of respect and trust within our school community, and we were just excited to share with you tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Next tonight, we do have Ms. Stacy Schwartz. Think... Welcome, Ms. Schwartz. Ms. Schwartz is an employee of District Six. Thank you for being here. And you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. So when I came into this position last year, it was a brand-new position and not well-defined. We didn't know what we were going to do with it. And thanks to, from our administration, the district, the United Way, the forward-thinking of everyone in our school, we were able to create a wonderful space for our families. We have even seen some community members come in to access our services. We see ourselves as a forward-thinking in this department, where we can provide our families with those basic needs that they need. And I want to thank all my teammates for all their hard work, all the work behind the scenes to get this dream become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. Those are all the public speakers we have tonight. Next on our agenda is to approve our consent agenda, and we'll need a motion to do that.
A move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the consent agenda as presented and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Mr. Bentley.
I should have asked this earlier, I apologize, but I just noticed that two of the trucks that were just... person were stolen. I was wondering if we could get some info on that?
Excuse me?
The two vehicles that we're getting rid of were just stolen, so I guess we're just telling them for more books. I just, yeah, I just wondered if I could get some background on what happened, and then he got them back?
Yeah, they were very... They're not usable. They're destroyed when they found them. They were found in the Denver area, junked.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing Ms. Lemon, will you give us her vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next up is our report from our Citizens Oversight Committee for the Mill Levy Override. Dr. Pilch, would you like to introduce this for us?
Thank you, President Matthews, and I see Chief Financial Officer Megan Sponsler coming forward, and she will introduce her co-presenter, and they'll give you a brief update on the Oversight Committee for the Mill Levy Override.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Good evening, President Matthews and members of the board. As you know, part of our Mill Levy Oversight work requires that we have a committee of citizens from Greeley and Evans. They meet periodically to go over the expenditures from the Mill Levy Override. And here tonight to present to you is one of our founding members. She's been with us ever since the beginning of the Mill Levy, Jessica Marshall. I'll let you introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Marshall. I'm the vice chair of the Mill Levy Override Citizens Oversight Committee. I've lived in Greeley my entire life. I'm a product of District Six schools. I graduated Northridge in 2004. I now have three children in District Six schools, one at West and two at Twain. Like many community members, I had concerns about Mill Levy spending and the allocation, and joined the committee to gain insight, ask questions, and hopefully, when necessary, hold both the district and the charter schools accountable for the spending. Other members on our committee are Gary Fuentes, who serves as the chair, Leslie McGrew, who serves as our secretary, Scott Rankin. Doran Azari is back here with me tonight. serves as our secretary, Scott Rankin, Dora Nozari is back here with me tonight, and Mike Zeller. Our committee met a few weeks ago to review the expenditures made with Mill Levy Override funds for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. The district has spent funds in the following areas, as outlined by the MLO ballot language: improving safety, security, and transportation; supporting academic and vocational programs to graduate career-ready students; providing up-to-date instructional materials and technology to support every learner; attracting and maintaining a competitive workforce; allocating MLO revenues to district charter schools. Our committee has found that not only are district MLO expenditures being spent in accordance with the ballot language, they are also directly tied to many of the outcomes of the strategic plan Innovation 2030. The work of the MLO Oversight Committee is part of that strategic plan, and so much of the plan work in other areas is being funded, at least in part, by MLO dollars. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the oversight.
And thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate, and we appreciate your work on this Oversight Committee. It's so important for us as a board, and I'm waiting to see if we have any questions from our board members, and I'm not seeing any. So, well, Ms. Mash, thank you.
I just had a question of how long is the term to serve on this committee?
So we recently discussed that at our last meeting. We have had kind of a natural changeover, just as people have chosen to step away. We have two new members, most recently Mr. Nozari and Mr. Zeller have joined us. We have opted to stick with that natural turnover because it seems to be working really well, to have some longevity in the committee allows us to know where we started, what those expenditures have looked like since the beginning, but also having some new, fresh eyes brings in a different perspective, so. I don't know if you went out to that.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Again, we appreciate so much your service on this committee, representing this committee tonight before us. And once again, we simply want to thank our taxpayers and our voters for supporting our children in this way, our students in this way. It makes such a tremendous difference in what we're able to offer in terms of our college and career programs, and so thank you. Next tonight, we have our 2023-2024 District Six Certified Staff Master Contract Agreement, and I do believe this is an action item that will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District Six approves the tentative agreements to be incorporated into the 2023-24 District Six Master Contract. These tentative agreements include the adoption of the salary schedules as presented. Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Pilch, would you like to introduce this and?
You all want to just approve it and not worry about the presentation. We're okay with that, too. We have our Chief Financial Officer Megan Sponsler, our president of our Greeley Education Association, Erin Snyder, here tonight just to give you an overview of what we're proposing for the settlement with the master teacher contract, and it's good news. It's good news for our employees, and so I know they're pleased to share it with you
Well, thank you very much. I'm so excited to be here with Erin. I think this is the earliest time that we've ever been in front of the board for approval of our contract, so this is really exciting. With our negotiated agreement, we kind of have three areas that we want to talk with you about tonight, pretty briefly. The first being language changes, then we have, of course, the salary schedules, and also employee benefits. On the language changes, those have been included in your board packet, so you can see the actual language. It's kind of in a redline form, so you can see what those changes are. But the first change has to do with sick leave and discretionary leave reimbursement. This has been kind of an ongoing conversation and something that we will continue to discuss as a team, but to make an easy change that will benefit everybody is to make this so that we automatically pay out any kind of sick leave and discretionary leave reimbursement when employees are eligible. So currently, you have to request that under the terms of the contract, and oftentimes, people forget to request their leave reimbursement, and so it kind of sits there. So this is just a way to make that process much easier.
And the other language change that I'm super excited about is our horizontal advancement. So currently, there are several obstacles for educators to jump through in order for them to apply for horizontal movement, and so we've streamlined that process. And the thing I'm most excited about is Form One, and the intent to move will be eliminated from our contract.
Erin really wanted to talk about that one. The next thing is the co-curricular salary schedule, and we have a couple of new things that will be added to that schedule, specifically around the CTE arena. And as we have our CTE center come onboard, we wanted to recognize some of those CTE programs that will be offered, and so those will be added to the co-curricular salary schedule.
For the special service provider, non-provisionary status, and due process rights, I just want to point out that District Six is forward-thinking in a lot of different areas, and I am super proud of us working together. Our special service providers are often treated like and viewed like a certified teacher, but in the Colorado state law, they do not have the same rights as a certified teacher. So our master contract proposal recognizes them for the work that they do and gives them the same rights as other certified teachers. So we are some of the first folks that are recognizing that and putting it in our contracts across the state, and I'm super proud of our work together to make that happen, so pretty big deal.
And then, last but not least, all of the committees that are currently meeting and have been part of our negotiation process, those committees will continue to meet, so around time and learning, support for students and staff, those committees will continue to meet.
All right. It's taken us a long time to get here, but we are mostly excited about getting to a $48,000 starting salary schedule, so lots of things to celebrate there. I feel like it speaks for itself.
So with that new starting salary, we did have to kind of restructure the salary schedule just a little bit. So we have a few columns that have been condensed, and so it looks just a little bit different than it has in the past. Along with that, we also created a new salary schedule for CTE. So we know that we have the CTE center coming starting next fall. We know that we have to hire qualified people to teach those courses, and some of those people may not necessarily come through the traditional teaching pathway. So we knew that we needed a way to pay our CTE educators a little bit different so that we could recruit and retain those people as we need them to start our new program. And then last, the other change has to do with the step-off leadership and co-curricular schedules. The change to the base salary on our traditional schedule carries through to those schedules as well. We know that you really probably can't read this, but this is a picture of what the new salary schedule looks like. It is a little bit narrower and just as long as it has been, but again, we are very excited to have $48,000 starting salary. And likewise, here is the new CTE salary schedule. Looks very similar, but the labels across the top are just a little bit different. And then finally, the employee benefits. You all approved that last meeting, so really, you know what those are, but what I wanted to point out is we are in the middle of our open enrollment window. We have about half of our employees enrolled, so if you haven't enrolled, please do. You have until Friday, so please don't wait till the last minute. Please start your enrollment now so that we can make sure that you get the benefits that you are eligible for. With that, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you both for being here and for the presentation. Sorry to have almost skipped you there. Seeing if we do have any questions or comments, Ms. Pappas and then Mr. Bentley.
A comment and then a question. So thank you for your work on this, and I know that we, when we met in negotiations, it was really important for us to look at a salary that would enable us to offer that to prospective candidates for our positions. So I appreciate the work that you put into that, and I'm really excited about the language. I think that will make a difference in the lives of teachers and educators. A question I have, can you just give me a definition of what a special service provider might be?
Oh, geez, that's kind of hard. There's nine.
Well, just like, just an example.
Counselors, speech-language pathologists, all of us, support people who are certified in a variety of ways, probably more than your classroom teachers, but not associated to a classroom.
Yeah, that's very exciting and honoring for their work as well. Thank you.
Nurses.
Mr. Bentley?
More of just a statement and kudos to you guys and your team going through negotiations this year. I was a little bit more aware of what actually heck was going on, just being a sophomore this year instead of a freshman, but I just wanted to give you guys a shout-out for, it's a challenging process. You got one side wanting one thing and us wanting to, not wanting you to have it, but not able to give you everything that you want, and just learning the way the school finance works and, you know, even the inflation and the cost of living rises, we're at least a year behind, you know, if not farther. So just seeing all those challenges firsthand and then owning the business myself and seeing some of the out-of-the-box thinking that you're doing and creative ways you're trying to offer as much as fiscally possible without being, you know, reckless with taxpayer money. It's just, there's a deep sense of appreciation for the job you guys do, and I just want to say thank you to both of you that it was, it was easy. It wasn't easy. It was polite, and it was constructive, and it was respectful, which I know for sure in the past it hasn't been. And so just for the citizens and the people in the room and watching, like, the process was, it was a negotiation, and it's not one-sided or lopsided, and nobody has a hand, but at the same time, everybody kind of understood the hurdles that we, as a community, have to jump through to kind of play in the sandbox, and, you know, from my point of view, they're doing an absolutely fantastic job with the dollars that they're given.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Any other questions or comments from board members?
President Matthews, Director Campos-Pitzy would like to speak.
Dr. Campos-Pitzy.
Yeah, I just also wanted to say how pleased I was with the salary schedule. I think staying competitive with our neighboring districts with Thompson and Pooter with that starting salary is going to be key in recruiting more teachers, retaining the ones that we have, and so I'm really happy with that outcome.
Thank you, Dr. Campos-Pitzy. I want to see any other comments or questions for you guys. I would just echo my thanks. I know that it takes, it takes a lot of work to bring it to us this quickly, and so on behalf of our principals who are anxious to know this information so that they can offer the starting salary to the people that they're recruiting, thank you so much for getting this to us so early. And Ms. Lemon, I think we're ready for a vote.
And Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos-Pitzy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, next, and finally, on our agenda tonight is our Board of Education Review of Book Appeals. And the Board of Education will hear appeals for the superintendent's decision to uphold the book review committee's findings and recommendations for the novel Beloved by Toni Morrison. And I will just start out by prefacing this conversation this way, that this is different than what we normally do as a school district. This is different than what we normally do as a school board. Most of the time, and as a matter of fact, in every meeting that I've ever been a part of, we operate as, more or less, as a legislative body, which means we approve policies that are in line with our state laws, and those policies are the lanes in which our administrators and our teachers run. And so we function primarily as a legislative body. From time to time, occasionally, we are called upon to act in a quasi-judicial capacity. And since my time, and I've been on this board for over five years now, in my five-plus years, we've never been called on to operate in this quasi-judicial capacity. And what that means is we hear an appeal of a decision that our administration has made based on the policies that we've set, and this could be for something like a, it could be an expulsion, it could be a personnel matter, but in this case, it has to do with books. We have a book policy. Our, that policy has been utilized by a number of people, and they have complained, filed an official complaint, and they did that in December about the book Beloved. That book has gone through this process that we created through policy. It has been reviewed by a committee, and now that comes back to us in an appeal. And so I want to just outline the way that that will work when, because it is this quasi-judicial, we're functioning this quasi-judicial capacity, we have to be a little bit more technical, we have to be a little bit more legal, we have to pay a little bit more, to pay more attention to the precision of the language that we use. And so we are here for that very specific purpose, and we will hear first from the people who appealed. We have four people, appellants, and those four people will be given about five minutes to receive questions, to introduce, but then receive questions from our board members about the appeal that they made based on the decision that our review committee made. And in that, what, this is not an opportunity for people to talk about whatever they want to speak on. It truly is an opportunity for them to speak about their appeal, what they found wrong in our book review committee's decision, and we will ask questions, and I would encourage our board members to, for us to be disciplined in the questions that we ask our appellants, that we not veer off into different topics, but that we ask very specific topics about this book and specifically their appeals. We do want these appellants to be heard. We want them to be heard by our board, we want them to be heard by our community, and for that reason, we would ask that people not be disruptive while they're speaking, whether you agree with them or whether you disagree with them. We would ask that our audience members maintain a professional decorum, that we are silent, that we are listening to their appeal, and we will do that as well. We also, tonight, will hear from then our committee, and they will, our appellants will have about five minutes to receive questions and to make, to better explain their appeals. Then we'll hear from the committee, why they felt that they made the decision that they did. We will not hear from the entire committee. We'll hear from Mr. Wes Tuttle, I believe. He is the chairperson of that committee. And so, again, when we ask questions of Mr. Tuttle, we want to be very mindful of the appeals that have been made and how, and Mr. Tuttle would ask that you be mindful of the appeals that have been made and try to address as many of those questions as we can. And then upon completion of that, we will have a discussion with our board members, and then we will, when that discussion is over, we will call for a vote. And that is how we have outlined this. Again, this is new territory for me, I think. Ms. Pappas, have you ever done this before? I don't think we have had an actual book appeal in over 15 years in this school district. So this is new for all of us, and we would appreciate your patience as we do that. So first up tonight, we'll be hearing from Ms. Jackie Bellander.
Excuse me, President Matthews, I think that you wanted to hear from legal counsel Nate Fall first.
Okay. Mr. Fall, did you have something you wanted to present to us first? Sorry.
And then, sir, I will just also share that earlier today, we were informed by Ms. Weber, she wouldn't be able to be here tonight, but I understand you will still hear or consider her appeal, and then we've recently received, I've just recently received a message that Ms. Miller is in an emergency situation, is not able to be here either, and unfortunately, because the way the Zoom link is set up tonight, we're not able to add anyone, but I would recommend that you consider her appeal even without her present if she's not able to make it, and perhaps she'll get here before we get to that point.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Mr. Fall?
Thank you, President Matthews and members of the board. Dr. Pilch, as President Matthews stated... Dr. Pilch, as President Matthews stated, the board received four timely appeals for the book Beloved by Toni Morrison. You're going to have a hearing with some of those appellants tonight. This is an opportunity for you to inquire as you may deem necessary, just to get some more clarification and learn more about the basis for the appeals. And so I encourage you to ask questions directed to the appellants about their nature of their appeals. For the individuals who were unable to attend tonight, I really want to encourage you to strongly consider the appeals that they made in writing. Those have been posted publicly. And so those are also an opportunity for you to consider the nature of the appeals. And so I, I think that you should certainly take those into consideration as you're making your decision. After you've had an opportunity to inquire from the appellants, you'll hear from Mr. West Tuttel. Mr. West Tuttel was the facilitator for the book review committee. That will be an opportunity for you to be available to answer any questions from the board regarding the aspects of the book committee process as well as this book review process. And again, just I encourage you to ask questions as you deem necessary to gain some clarification about that book review committee process. Upon completion of hearing from Mr. West Tuttel, I think the board should engage in kind of a thoughtful discussion about what they've learned from the appellants as well as from Mr. Tuttel. And that, at that time, the board should take some action on the appeals. And that can be whether or not you want to uphold Dr. Pilch's recommendation, upholding the book review committee's recommendation, or if you want to go another route. If you want to add further restrictions to the book, or if you want to pull the book in its entirety, that would certainly be an opportunity for you to make a motion to that effect. And of course, keeping in mind all of the legal parameters that we have been discussing surrounding any further restrictions to the book Beloved. We know that there are real-world First Amendment implications associated with putting restrictions on books. The board does have broad discretion in doing that. But when it does something like makes a restriction on a book, it needs to really provide on the record reasons for its motivations. And so if we are discussing things like educational suitability or well as pervasive vulgarity, the board really should be articulating very clearly on the record why the book is educationally unsuitable or pervasively vulgar, for example, if you are planning to add a further restriction to the book. I think the board's heard enough from me in terms of those legal considerations as well as the nature of the complaints. Before we begin, I'd be happy to kind of take any questions right now or we can get started.
Any other questions from board members? Not seeing any, Mr. Fall, so I think we can go ahead and get started.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our first appellant will be Ms. Jackie Bellander. And Ms. Bellander, as, as you come forward to speak. Ms. Bellander, are you, are you present with us tonight?
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Ms. Bellander is not here either? And so our next appellant will be Ms. Robin Howard.
Do we want to review her appeal?
I, I think we, I think we can review her, review her appeal at, at the end. Or do we, Mr. Fall, would you recommend that we review Ms. Bellander's appeal without her present? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Howard. Just, just a second. Let, let me confer with legal, legal counsel for just a second. Because we may want to, to ask questions or enable board members to ask questions about Ms. Bellander's appeal.
I, I would say after you have finished with Ms. Howard and considered kind of any other appellants, then at, at the closure of all the appellants speaking, then you can consider the appeals on the record for everybody else, the written appeals that you received.
Okay, thank you. We'll cover all those at once at the very end. I'm sorry, Ms. Howard. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Howard. I would just ask, as, as you're presenting your, your appeal, that you not read from, directly from, from the book. This is, our boardroom is for a K-12 audience. This is, this is a book that is for, for high schoolers or is being recommended for, for high schoolers or perhaps middle schoolers, but certainly not for, for kindergartners or elementary children. And so if you would not read directly from, from the book and just as we discuss the topic, that, that there may be elementary students that, that have access to this video. So thank you for, for being here tonight. We'll hear just a brief statement from you. You may be interrupted as board members have, have questions. But if you'll hear, if you will give us a brief statement and then we will ask questions of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to ask, have you all had, have you all read my written appeal?
We have. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So this is my first time to attend a board meeting in person, but I'm watching online. I've really gained an appreciation for the heavy responsibility and time commitment that you all carry in this position. The student examples that you've invited encourage us to see the good that is at work. And I'm so glad to see you tackling the issues of safety and nutrition in our schools. But there is this other issue that I'm afraid has been overlooked or misunderstood. And that's why I'm here. To present a warning of a Trojan horse in our schools and an appeal to your action before it erupts in our community. So far, I'm at least, I'm one of at least 175 people who have submitted complaints on at least 11 books that reside in our school libraries or are used for class assignments, each containing such graphic, such sexual content that although they've been deemed appropriate for our children, we're not allowed to read them at this meeting. Not that I would want to. We all desire freedom to do as we wish, parents to raise their children with their values, teachers to instruct them as they like. Banning a book means placing it out of reach of society, which would infringe on freedom of choice. I'm not asking to ban books. Families and individuals can still, outside of school, have the freedom to access whatever reading material they wish to access. But within our community, there are many families that are active participants within their respective faith communities. Making these controversial reading materials available to their children in school libraries or requiring the reading of such materials alienates these families and undermines the trust placed in school district leadership. You have an opportunity to help rebuild this trust. I'm objecting to the policy recommended by the book review committee. Parents shouldn't need to constantly monitor materials. Students shouldn't need to be singled out because their values differ. And school staff shouldn't have to spend their time and our money to notify parents when a book is checked out.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Ms. Pappas has, has a question for you.
Thank you for being here tonight. So are you aware that there is the option for parents to opt out of reading materials that are in our libraries?
I am aware. I don't think it's effective.
Why do you think it's not effective?
As I said on that, in my written appeal, this places an unfair burden of constantly monitoring materials on parents who have already voiced their objections. It does not cover materials used for class assignments and sets parents and schools in opposing corners rather than working in harmony for the betterment of their students. It has too many loopholes to truly help students maintain purity of thought and may result in some being singled out for criticism.
So just to push a little bit on that, so if, if by asking parents to give permission to read a book such as Beloved, that's placing an undue burden on them. What about the burden that it would create for parents to have to choose to read a book such as Beloved?
For asking the parents to read it?
No, asking a parent to have to opt in to reading a book or a parent choosing to read a book such as Beloved.
With the plethora of materials that are available that would not be controversial, I don't know why we would need to, to go with a book like Beloved that has such graphic descriptions of violence and rape and bestiality.
So regardless of the, of the book, the burden, does that stay the same? Are, are you saying it's, it's more of a burden for parents to have to opt out? Is that what you're saying in your appeal?
I guess I'm not quite clear.
So I'm asking you not necessarily to talk about the content of Beloved. I'm asking you to think about your appeal, which says that you are, you have stated that for a parent, that it bases an undue burden on parents to have to allow their child to read a book. Is that what you said?
No. I said that it is an unfair burden of constantly monitoring materials because it said in your recommendations, it is important to remind the complainants that any parent or guardian in District Six may request that the school limit their own students' access to all or any specific library materials.
Right. So I'm saying that it's, I'm, I'm just clarifying that in order for, for a parent to have to say, I want my child to read this book, which is what we've heard some people say, that also places a burden on them as well.
I think those parents would be welcome to do that if they would, at home.
But you're saying that, that it would be different in that case? Is that correct?
I don't see that the book would need to be included in the school reading at all. They can do that at home.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Have you, I think you indicated on your, your form that you haven't read the book or that you hadn't when you, when you submitted it. Have you read the book?
I have read the summary of it online.
The, the summary online?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is a very nicely whitewashed summary. And I do agree that there are a lot of good themes in it.
And, and you yourself are not a parent in the district? Is that correct?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Okay, thank you. Are there any other, Ms. Pappas, do you have another question?
So just one more question to follow up. So if you're not a parent at this time in the district, what is your interest in determining what books are in the library, in our District Six libraries?
Because students have, the things that we put into our students' minds now will become what our community becomes later. Those things introduced into an immature mind now will become a part of them. And not all of them are able to handle that, just as not all of them are able to handle a weapon.
Thank you. Ms. Mash?
You just mentioned that there are a number of texts available on varying topics. And so I was wondering, what type of information would you consider appropriate for high school and middle school students to know about slavery? What types of detail would be appropriate for them to understand the atrocities that were committed against human beings in this country?
Yes. I believe, I haven't had to read books like this. And I don't think that I am unsympathetic at all to what has gone on in those places. Museums that deal with those kinds of things might be a really good source for information. I don't have titles right off my tongue, but I'm sure that I understand that there is at least one museum that talks about that era. And I'm sure they would have plenty of information. Also, I don't think that stating that someone was raped or abused or tortured is the same as taking you, as literature is meant to do, right into the very emotion and specific details of how that's done.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Howard? We're, we're over our five minutes, Ms. Howard. Did let you go a little long. You are sort of representing all the, all the appellants tonight.
Thank you so much.
Oh, Ms., so thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Howard. Okay, that sounds good. Next, we have Ms. Sonia Miller.
Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Miller. I will, will remind you, as I did Ms. Howard, that we are not reading from specific passages from the book.
Why is that? Why aren't we reading from this book?
We're not, Ms. Miller.
Why?
Ms. Miller, this is, this is for a K-12 audience.
I know.
Right?
I know.
Everything that is said in here needs to be appropriate for a kindergartner. And this book is not being considered for kindergarten.
It's not appropriate for school age, period. Period.
We're not reading regardless. We're not reading passages from.
I can't read about rape and I can't read about screwing cows and I can't read about.
Ms. Miller.
I'm not reading from the book. I'm telling you what's in the book. I'm telling you what's in the book. They throw a baby against a wall and it's bleeding. They rape people. They rape cows. Why are we talking about this? Why is this an appeal? Why are we even here, Matthews? Why are you guys asking questions, trying to justify keeping this in?
You need to stop. The guidelines or?
We're not reading from the book, Ms. Miller. Period.
I didn't read from the book.
So, Ms. Miller, you're a community member. You do not have children who presently attend District Six. At least that's what you've indicated on this. Filing an appeal, writing it exposes children to pornography. You also state that it's morally and ethically and spiritually wrong, also subjects children to, to trauma. Can you briefly explain why you believe the novel exposes children to pornograph, pornography and, and subjects of children, children to trauma?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that last sentence you said.
I'm sorry. Can you briefly explain why you believe the novel exposes children to pornography and subjects children to trauma?
I don't believe it exposes them to, to pornography. It does expose them to pornography.
How would you define porno?
How would you define pornography, Pastor Matthews? Can I say it? Can I talk about sex here? Can I talk about putting a penis inside of a vagina here?
Ms. Miller.
Can I do that?
We don't, we don't need to, we don't need to do that.
We don't need to? That's right. We don't need to read this. We don't need to read this to learn about slavery. We don't need to read this to learn about sex.
Ms. Miller.
Or bestiality.
Ms. Miller.
What?
Can you define pornography for us?
Sex. In front of an audience? Sex. Graphic details of sex?
Ms. Miller, have you, have you read the book?
I have read portions of the book. I've got it here in front of me.
But you've not, you've indicated.
Have you read the book, Pastor Matthews? Have you read the entire book? Have you read the book, Pastor Matthews?
So, may I just clarify? You say you've read portions of the book. What portions of the book have you read?
I can't read them to you.
You can't? So you can, you can tell us, you can tell us by the?
Every other page?
You read the entire book, every other page?
I've got highlights, I've got underlines. Do you want me to read them to you? Why are we having this discussion? This is so absurd. This does not belong in school, period. You can go to High Plains Library District Library and you can get this book.
So, Ms. Miller, you have, we're here tonight because we wanted to hear your appeal. We're trying to be respectful of you and listen to you, but the bottom line.
You're trying to offer our children porn.
Bottom line is, we are here to listen to your appeal. And so we need to hear from you and honestly, try to understand. You have not read the book.
I am trying to honestly understand why you guys are trying to get this in our schools and keep this in our schools. This is one of how many books? You have 5,000 complaints from the community. Why is it that I'm up here on trial? Why do I have to answer your questions? You answer our questions. Why is this book in our school? And why are you trying to keep it there? Have any of you, have any of you read this book? Have any of you read? You've read this book. Natalie Mash has read this book.
Ms. Miller, I actually have read the book twice and actually have listened to the audiobook just last night.
And you would give this to kids?
I actually do not have to answer that question because we are questioning you. So I'm questioning.
Right. I shouldn't have to be questioned because you guys are trying to give children pornography.
I am questioning you, Ms. Miller, when our board policy says that individual parents that individual parents can opt their children out of reading certain books, any further restrictions would impact all students across the system. Why do you believe it's necessary to make decisions for how other parents make decisions in the best interest of their own children?
Why do you believe that I have to defend this? You defend this. You tell me why this needs to be in our schools.
My question to you is, would you like me to repeat it?
Yes.
Board policy allows individual parents to opt their children out of reading certain books.
I don't think every single parent in this district should have to opt their children out of this garbage. Why don't they opt their children into this garbage? No, I heard you ask the question of the other gal. Why don't you have the people who want their kids to read this garbage opt in? Don't make everybody else opt out. There's 23,000 parents. There's 23,000 students in this district. Do you think all the parents in this district know that this book is even in this school? Or that they need to worry about the porn that you guys are trying to give our kids?
Apparently, you are here not to engage in a conversation. I am asking you, do you want me to reread this?
No, I answered your question.
No, you did not.
What is your question that I have? What is the portion of your question that I have not answered?
You did not answer the portion of my question that says, "Why do you believe it's necessary to make decisions for how other parents should make decisions in the best interest of their own children, knowing full well that it is a First Amendment right for children to have access..."
To porn?
To books.
To porn.
Literature.
They can have access to literature in this school. They don't need access to porn in the school.
Ms. Miller, your time is up.
They can take access to that at the High Plains Library District.
Wait.
Yeah, I think that that was a little out of order, Ms. Miller.
Absolutely. No, she... Her time is up. Next up is... Well, we have someone who wants to read a statement on behalf of Ms. Weber, I think. That's Ms. Candice Sawyer. Again, Ms. Sawyer, I'll remind you, we're not reading portions from the book.
Just so y'all know, slavery ended in December 6th of 1865.
She needs to read what Ms. Weber prepared and not your comments. You are not the appellant.
That is a part of this, Ms. Mash, so let me speak. You want respect, give it back. Okay? Jamie stated in her statement that Beloved was difficult to read due to heavy content and left an enduring impression. That was one of Ms. Pilch's statements in the recommendation to keep this book. Her comment was, here, "District 6 is admitting that reading this book may affect a child negatively, long-term, potentially for their lifetime. The risks of exposing a child to this type of trauma far outweigh any lesson or insight that may be obtained by reading such material. The same objective could be obtained by other means without the risk of long-term negative mental and emotional damage. In addition, once a child is exposed to this risk without informed consent and without a fully-developed brain, which these books are in the K-8 libraries, rational decision-making capabilities, and risk versus benefit analysis, the damage is done. No teacher or media specialist can predict how this will affect the child in the future. I personally experienced great difficulty as I read this book." And she did read the book in its entirety. "And while I appreciate that these horrific atrocities happen to people, I do not see the value in living through them in a book. I have an adult coping skills and found the gruesome depictions in this book too much to bear. No child should accidentally stumble upon this book and suffer those unintended consequences at the hand of their school. I implore the board to reconsider this poor decision by the Book Review Committee and Dr. Pilch. The committee stated the obvious concerns of this type of material and then disregarded it by keeping it available to minors. If a person 18 years of age or older would like to broaden their literary horizon by exploring this type of material, which this book is rated 18 and over, that is well within their rights. But to make this book available to children without parental consent is a reckless and careless decision. Furthermore, I do not believe the school district will give full, informed consent to parents. The report from the Book Committee on the district website greatly varies from the letter that was sent to complainants. Dr. Pilch conveniently left out the words "sodomy," "abuse," "graphic sexual content," "rape," "bestiality," "nudity and sexual excitement." In the report sent to the community, why would we trust that the parents would receive a full, informed consent about the book their child checked out when you didn't even mail the full report to the complainants? The amount of dishonesty and lack of transparency from District 6 proves they cannot handle properly informing the parents. Furthermore, by the time the parent finds out, the damage has already been done. My solution is to require parental consent before the potential of damage to their child occurs. Full informed consent would be providing the parent of their minor student with all of the excerpts of concern and controversy contained in the book before the child reads. That is the only solution which gives the parent true, informed consent as to their child being exposed to harmful materials and the literacy freedom all people deserve. Finally, if I read this book to a minor, I'd be charged as a sex offender. What makes you adults any different? Any of you? Providing lewd, obscene, and graphically sexual and violent content like Beloved to minors is a crime. As she stated in quotes from the book, "fucking cows." Sorry, but that's not beautiful literature for children."
Sawyer. You're done. Please cut her microphone. Ms. Miller. Ms. Sawyer, you're done. Thank you. Thank you, your time is up, Ms. Sawyer. Thank you. We're not reading from the book, and your time is up. Can we remove Ms. Sawyer? Please, Mr. Gates. We're not pushing porn on children. Well, now I hear from our committee, a representative from our committee. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle, for being here tonight. We appreciate your work and your committee's work, as we do for all of our committees, but we know that this has been a lot of work for you and for this committee, and so thank you for being here tonight to make your presentation.
Thank you for letting me be here. As you know, this is a complex thing. There is not an easy answer on these, and it is complex. But I do have the privilege to share with you the work that this committee has done. We do have 22 members on the committee, and you'll hear a little bit more later about how they were selected, and I just want to share the report with you. I'm going to also share a little bit of the context that we are in with the district, all the way back from the complaints that we received, through where they are existing in our district, through the process that the committee went through, as well as in our recommendation. First of all, it was highlighted... So there was complaint forms submitted from 175 complainants that were received. I think Amy Lemon is attaching this PowerPoint, so if you want to look at it there, you're welcome to. Otherwise, I do have it up behind you there, on the screens there. It was alluded to then, all of those complainants that submitted their complaint forms in December, we sent certified letters to. We wanted to make sure that they got receipt, that we knew that they had been submitted and that we were taking action and taking them seriously and making sure that we were following through with that. Many of the complainants submitted multiple forms. They would submit it for each location that the book was housed in. And then, most of them were duplicated copies of a single form. So you've seen many of those. Most of them were identical that we had. We provided several opportunities for the community to be involved. Like I said, January 4th, we sent the certified letters to all the complainants. Then on January 17th, which was two weeks prior to our first committee meeting, we posted on the website opportunities for people to sign up, to present to the committee, share any additional information they had. They could also submit written additional written information if they chose to do that as well. So that was two weeks prior to our first committee meeting. No one signed up to come to speak to the committee. We did have one submission in writing, and it was in support of keeping Beloved in our libraries. Then on March 7th, the committee's recommendation was submitted. Deirdre, Dr. Pilch then made her ultimate decision there. That was posted on the District 6 website on March 7th. Same day, we also submitted and sent letters then to all the complainants that had submitted related to Beloved. We sent them the superintendent's decision as well as the appellate process that they had at their disposal. As you know, there were four appeals, and then March 28th, a letter went to them, both in email and US mail, as to the next steps, including tonight's hearing. Those four appellate's are there, listed. You've already discussed them. Let me share with you a little bit about the committee that we have. So the committee... Sorry, I gotta catch up on my notebook here. The committee is one that was created by invitation. It wasn't an application process, but we wanted to have broad representation on it. We wanted people that were able to come in with an open mind. We wanted people that were neutral, that would be able to consider all options. Since people that had submitted complaint forms had already kind of stated their viewpoint, we did not include any of them in the process. Nor at the other end of the continuum, High Plains Library and UNC Library that have such strong opinions around free speech and wouldn't consider banning books, we didn't include those at that end. We really tried to make sure that we had broad representation of people in the middle. What we did was we wanted to make sure that we had broad representation. So you'll see the different groups that we have represented here. First thing was community. We did think about... Boy, people alluded to some of the traumatic experiences in the books. So we contacted Becky Whitehurt, who oversees some of the stuff at North Range Behavioral Supports. And we said, "Is there a therapist that could be on our committee that deals with trauma, that deals with students, and have their perspective on this committee?" We also approached a large church in town and said, "Do you have a staff member who would be willing to be on our committee?" So we sought out people, a broader community that would be on the committee. When we talk about parents, DAC, District Accountability Committee, is a parent committee with representation from every school. So we went to them, and we said, "Gosh, we've got great representation across the system. Would some of you be willing to participate?" We actually had six of them interested. Five of them joined us. One wasn't able to just because of the schedule of the meetings, but five of them who've been on this committee all came from DAC. We also included two students who were recent graduates from our district. We wanted to have that student voice. Both of them are in college now. We have six teachers on it. The teachers include both teachers from each of our high schools, as well as our certified librarian, as well as two middle school teachers. As you know, and you'll see shortly, this book was in some of our middle schools. We wanted to have that middle school voice in the room. When we think about administrators, there are four administrators. Two of them are building-based, and two of them are district-based. The building-based, we had one at a high school and one at a middle school. So we really tried to make sure that we had that broad representation. There were three facilitators. Myself as a primary facilitator. Nathan Fall was there with legal and be able to answer questions in relation to that. And the third one is Diana Riley. And while she wasn't a direct facilitator, she was involved with a lot of the creation of the criteria. And so we had her as a third person, as a consultant, as we were going through this book review process. The expectations for the committee? First and foremost was that they read the book in its entirety. We were comparing the book in its entirety against the criteria. Second thing, we wanted to meet in person. It's hard to do this type of conversation over Zoom, and so we really wanted to have these meetings in person. And the third thing was, we participated in consensus. It wasn't a vote, it wasn't a majority rules. We talked, we listened to each other. We continued the conversation and posing different questions and perceptions and different perspectives until we collaborated on one and came to consensus with our committee's recommendation. Where are the books in District 6? First of all, we went back in some of the history that we were able to pick up. We know that in 1991, Beloved was added to the National College Board for AP Literature Curriculum. We know that around that time, some of our schools did use that as part of their courses. Indications are that the Beloved that we have were first purchased around 1999 through 2004, were the purchase dates for the books. This one just shows briefly some of the books that have been checked out, the frequencies, when they've been checked out. So you kind of have that reference. You can see what grade levels have been checking them out and their most recent date of checkout. The committee process. So our first committee meeting, we met, we went over all the state laws, federal laws, Board of Education policies that tied to our work. We wanted to ground ourselves, know where our parameters were. So Nate was critical in this first meeting. We then also looked at the criteria. The criteria is the crux of our conversation. The criteria is what we were comparing the book against. And that, as you know, is in Policy KECR and Policy IJ. And then we provided committee members with all the complaints, so they could review those, they could read them, so they have all of that documentation. That was all at first meeting. The criteria, I just want to highlight just briefly. Diana Riley, as I mentioned earlier, she's a retired administrator from our district. We contracted her a little bit with this ball to help us kind of get these things organized. She contacted Colorado Department of Education. She talked with the American Library Association. And American Library Association oversees both public libraries as well as our school libraries. So that was a great organization. Through CDE, she was also put in touch with a couple of school districts here in Colorado who also have some criteria set forth for them. So these criteria were created and are very aligned to those organizations that I was just sharing with. And like I say, these are in our Policy KEC and Policy IJ. The committee then had two follow-up meetings. During our second and third meeting, we utilized the consensus process for discussion and consideration. Committee reached consensus on our recommendation. In addition to reading the entire book, the committee met for a total of about six hours to reach and finalize the recommendation. In addition to that, individual committee members used their personal time to prepare input and feedback throughout the process. What is our committee's recommendation? First of all, in relation to high school. After reading the book in its entirety and with careful and thoughtful consideration of the criteria, the committee recommends the book remains in high school libraries. And you can read the rest of that paragraph there. In relation to middle schools and K8s, because that's the other location that exists in our libraries right now. So in relation to that, our recommendation is that the school would provide phone and email notification to parents so they're aware that their child checked out a book with mature themes. We had some conversation about this. Because some of the members are well aware that especially high school students just sign their own parent permission forms. And so knowing that, we felt that parent notification was actually stronger than parent permission. That there was better likelihood of getting that information to parents and having them informed so they could be a part of the conversation with their kids if they're reading the book. We also talked specifically about the K eight schools. And we did feel the book, because of the themes, because of the complexity of the things, there are some strong things with allegory, metaphors, symbolism. There's just a lot of strong text, dense text. And so for that reason, it's not accessible for K five kids, for elementary school students. So our recommendation is that it should only be available for sixth through eighth grade students in those K eight schools. I know you can't read this on the screen and it's not intended to be read. But in the report then, there's 21 bullets that are statements that align directly to the criteria. Each one has parenthetical at the end, the criteria that it aligns to. And these are just statements that they felt really represented why we were making the recommendation we were. Additionally, there's some paragraphs here and the closing paragraphs. "Additionally, the committee agrees that although Beloved contains mature themes and graphic passages, however, those passages were limited to only a few pages and are not pervasive throughout the novel." So that was one of the things when we talked about pervasive vulgarity. The second thing, "In terms of educational suitability, in consideration of the literary value of the material as a whole, Beloved gives students the opportunity to read an advanced literary text to further students' understanding of lived experiences of individuals who experienced slavery while living in the Reconstruction era, which will challenge students to learn broader perspectives." "Beloved also encourages and promotes learning in different contexts, which advances the district's curriculum and promotes the goal of educating District Six students to the fullest of its potential." That recommendation then went to Dr. Pilch. Dr. Pilch had then the ultimate decision and her recommendation was to support the committee's recommendation as it stands. She added, "An emphasis there, it's important to remind the complainants that any parent guardian in District Six may request that the school limit their own students' access to all or any specific library materials. Any parent guardian may also request notification of books their own child checks out." District Six supports each parent guardian making this decision for their own child. That's my part. Any questions before I sit down?
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Again, we appreciate your labors, especially, and the labors of this committee. And so I do imagine we'll have some questions for you. And our first comes from Mr. Norwood.
Mr. Tuttle, thank you very much for the consideration that you guys put into the book and the time that you put into it. Just a couple of quick questions. I know you guys talked about opting out. How difficult would it be to put something in Infinite Campus so that if a child wanted to go check the book out, it would be in Infinite Campus and it would be readily available for the librarian to see that?
Actually, rather than Infinite Campus, we talked about Destiny. So Destiny is the system that our district uses to log our library books. And we can easily put a flag. So if a parent comes in and says, I don't want my child to read X Y Z books, we can put a flag right there. And the minute that kid comes up to check out a book, that pops up and we can verify that it is or is not one of those books that the parents request. So that's a very easy thing for us to do in the system Destiny.
Is it currently in the system?
Yeah.
Ms. Pappas.
Thank you too. That was a great presentation. We appreciate all the work of you and the committee. So just to clarify, Beloved is not available to students K five?
That is our recommendation.
They have restricted that?
That's our recommendation, correct.
Not seeing any other questions, but Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. So if the book is at Chapala, how are they preventing K through five to be restrictions from that?
Yeah. So we have a couple of possibilities. So that's one of the things we need to finish working through with that school. One possibility is they could create a separate shelf that's just for the sixth through eighth grade students that would kind of separate that book off. So we're going to work with Chapala. I have not worked with Chapala yet until we finalized our recommendation and our decision based on your support tonight, your decision tonight. And then we'll roll that out. But that is something that we will need to work through because Chapala is a K eight school and we want to make sure that it is only available for sixth through eighth students there.
Mr. Tuttle, could you perhaps describe what you described to me with how the books will be identifiable at the middle school and the K eight?
So in the middle school, we will want parent permission. We talked about several things. One is putting like a sticker on the spine, putting a bookmark in that would indicate for the students that if you check this book out, your parents will be notified. So that the students are aware upfront of that. So that would be red flags that we can just have right there in the books. And then obviously, in Destiny, when that pops up to check the book out, it would alert then whoever's checking that book out, knowing that some of our libraries are staffed with certified librarians, some of our instructional pairs. But it would notify whoever is checking those books out that this book needs to have parent notification given. And so all of those things would allow us to make sure that we make sure that process happens.
Mr. Norwood.
I apologize, my synapses are firing a little slow tonight. But you guys recommended that the parent be notified once the book was checked out. And now you're telling me too that there's also a notification in Destiny that will let the librarian know whether or not that child is permitted to check that book out.
So if a parent were to come in and say, I don't want my child to check out Beloved in this example, that would be in Destiny. And if the child went to attempt to check that book out, that notice would pop up in Destiny and would say, oh, I'm sorry, your parent has requested that you not check out this book. Could you find another book? And so we could have that conversation right there upfront if a parent chooses that. If the parent hasn't made that choice and it's any of the other students then, then that notification would pop up to remind that person to make sure that we notify the parents. And we talked about doing that in both an email form as well as then either a text or a phone call. So we know sometimes our email gets so busy that we don't look at it. But that text or email or the text or a phone call notification would be that kind of more immediate notification. So there would be kind of that immediate response there.
Would it be difficult to get an electronic signature from a lot of the parents to put them in Destiny?
A parent signature for what reason?
You know, to, before the child checked the book out rather than after they checked it out?
That is, so we talked about parent permission. And that would be an option, definitely. We opted not to go that route just because there were several on the committee that talked about Dems very aware of high school students especially signing their own parent permission forms. And so feeling that that wouldn't necessarily put the guardrails in that we're wanting to. And so we felt that parent notification would be a stronger way to do that.
Couldn't they do that at registration? Parents, when they come in to register?
They could. Right now, that puts a lot on just a single title. Because right now, Beloved is the only one that we have with that recommendation.
Ms. Sullivan.
Let's see, I have a couple of questions for you. What support system is set up right now if a child is triggered by the content that's in the book?
So we did talk about that, that obviously we want the parents to be able to have conversations with the kids. But we do have a pretty strong mental health team in each of our schools. And inclusive of that is not only our school counselors and social workers, but also we have North Range therapists at each of our buildings. And so there really is that full range of support. If something does trigger, we want to be able to support the students. And so there is that support. And like I say, we had North Range therapists on the committee making this recommendation.
Okay. My next question then is, how is this getting conveyed to the Hispanic population? Families of families that only speak Spanish? Because even if they're tuning in to our videos or whatnot online, they're not understanding the content. So how are we getting this information to those parents?
So in the parent notification, that would happen in both English and Spanish. Because we do recognize that a large number of our families predominantly speak Spanish and we would want to make sure that our notification goes out in both languages.
So what goes in those, I guess, the notifications? Are you going to be including some of the excerpts? Are you going to include that there is the rape scenes, that there is?
What we talked about right now is that it would be, there are some adult themes in the text. And the reason we were doing that is if there ends up other books that have also parent notification down the road, we wanted to be able to have kind of a template that we could send out that talks about parent, that there are some complex themes that are in this topic. And we want them to be able to have those conversations with their students as they're reading it.
But adult themes are quite, that's quite of a broad verbiage, I guess. So most parents are going to look at that and see that as just, you know, being like a PG 13 type thing. Because currently, if I'm not mistaken, and you're, you know, recently was a principal in the schools. So what level of movies do we allow kids to watch without a parent consent?
So we do have a board policy that talks about the levels of, the ratings of movies that are available for both elementary, middle school and all the way up through high school.
So what levels are they that we require parent permissions?
The PG 13 does require parent permission.
From every student in the class?
In certain levels.
Okay. So then if we're having that and this book is allowed to be in the libraries for K through, or I'm sorry, six through eight, then why are we not having a permission slip for that book as well if we're doing it for the movies? What's the difference?
Well, that's why we're doing the parent notification. Because again, we think that that is stronger. We think that notifying parents in two forms is more likely that the parent will actually get that word than parent permission.
But you're suggesting the notification come after they check it out, so?
The same day that it checks out, right.
So that's like allowing a child to go to an R rated movie. And I'm selling a thunder on this one. But letting a child go to an R rated movie and then calling them halfway through after they've already been exposed to it to say, oh, hey, your kid's in here. So why are we not doing that prior?
And that's definitely a choice that you guys could make if you wanted to. Like I say, in this book, for example, you don't get to anything until 20 pages into the book. And so it's a complex, dense book. And I know most of you have read it and you know what I mean as far as when that happens within the book. And so the kids more than likely not going to have gotten to some of those complex themes that we're wanting to have the parent be able to engage in the conversations with.
But you can also flip through the book and the N word is in there like multiple times. So if we're looking?
Ms. Miller.
If we're looking at the whole diversity in our schools and making everybody feel inclusive, how is having kids read a book that has that word in there repeatedly? Because all we're doing is desensitizing these kids to the rape and the verbiage and whatnot. And we should be protecting our kids more so.
The committee really did weigh those excerpts against the greater context of the book. In addition, some of those passages, when you look at the passage, the context that it's within, it really is around a greater message, a different message. It's not focused on, if I use the bestiality part. That's not the focus of that section. And so it really talks about what are they saying within that? And so some of the things. I'm not just, you know.
I'm sorry for this because, I mean, one of the sections is?
Ms. Pappas.
I would just like to clarify, Mr. Tuttle, sorry to interrupt, but our job right now is to listen to Mr. Tuttle and his recommendation of the committee, not to decide about the committee recommendation that will happen in our conversation. But I would like to clarify. As a teacher and I choose to show a PG 13 movie, I send parent permission slips home knowing that I am requiring my classroom to watch this movie. Can you just clarify, we are not requiring any student to read the book Beloved unless it is an AP Literature class and part of the AP Literature curriculum. And in that point, then, if they are required, then my understanding is, and you can clarify, but my understanding is in the AP Literature curriculum, Beloved is one of the books on that curriculum. So if I choose to have my AP Literature students read that book, then I do need to get parent permission. Is that accurate?
That is all accurate. So AP Literature is the only course that would require the reading for students. Otherwise, it's just that it's available in the library.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tuttle, I have a question. This has been very public for about a month. And our parents do currently have the option to opt their children out of any book, not just this book. They can opt their children out of any book in their child's library. So because this has been so public, have we had any parents decide to opt their children out of this book in the last?
Dear to just look into that and I'll let her maybe answer that if she would.
It's my understanding that we have not had any parents opt their children out of this book in this time period. We actually have one family at one of our elementary schools that opted their child out of free access to the library without parent permission much earlier this school year. And then we have another parent that has accessed or has opted their children out of Harry Potter specific books at another school. But no one has opted out of checking out Beloved at this time.
Okay. Are there any other questions from Mr. Tuttle? Mr. Tuttle, I'm not seeing any. So thank you. Again, I know this has been a lot of work for you and putting this together for us and also for your committee and so our deepest gratitude. So now we will discuss as a board, and this is the appropriate time. If we have arguments to make or things that we want to say about the book and this is open for discussion, I'll let you guys punch your buttons. Ms. Pappas.
Well, I would just like to remind us as we're making our comments tonight that we heard earlier today in the work session that we are, we should be looking at educational suitability and pervasive vulgarity. And that it is, it goes against First Amendment rights, not only to speech, but also to have access to information. And we cannot remove a book or restrict access to a book just because we don't like the content. And I believe that's what I heard Mr. Fall say pretty specifically tonight. I don't know if I need to clarify that, but that's what I think I heard. The other thing I would like to just state is that this book is restricted K five, which has been an argument by people that we are allowing access to our students K twelve, which is not accurate. The other conversation that has been about parental consent is that it does restrict access for our students at high school. It restricts access and it also puts a condition on the book. It stigmatizes the book. So I heard those things from our legal counsel tonight. So I just really would like to say that I believe strongly that based on the fact that, yes, I have read the book. I've read the book twice. I've listened to the book and yes, I agree with the book committee's comments. This is a difficult book to read. The content is hard and it is hard to hear about historical information. And yes, as the committee said, it might cause some disturbance, it might cause some sadness. But I believe that there are, those are things that happen in life. And I believe that the book committee did a valid, valid, comprehensive look at the criteria. They looked at the policy that we have in place to read the book. We have a committee that is very diverse and diverse committee members. We also realize that we want, this book is a Pulitzer Prize winner. This is an AP Literature, on the AP Literature Curriculum Book List. We want our students to have access to information that might be difficult. The Reconstruction period was a difficult time and we want our students to understand that. And there is some content in there that is, that it might be difficult to read, but it does not mean that it is pervasive vulgarity or pornographic that has been stated earlier by some of our complainants. So I personally believe that it is important for us to think strongly about what our legal right is for having books where they are. And I think that my recommendation will be that we support the committee recommendation and the superintendent's upholding of the committee recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Are there other questions or comments from board members? Ms. Mash.
I also will be voting to, well, would move that we would accept the book review committee's recommendation and Dr. Pilch's acceptance of that. I looked up some comments from Toni Morrison on her book. And she's known for her depth examination of the Black experience. And she states that she was keenly aware of erasures and absences and silences in the written history available to her, silences that she took for censure. And of all the characters chosen for artistic examination with empathy or contempt, vulnerable young Black girls were profoundly absent. And that is why she chose to read, to write a book that explored the experience of a Black woman. Beloved is actually based on a true story of a woman who decided to kill her children rather than allow them to be sold back into slavery. rather than allow them to be sold back into slavery. These stories absolutely should bother us because of the atrocities that were committed, and, sorry, I'm looking at all of my different quotations. Contemporary American readers must confront the history of slavery in order to address its legacy, which manifests itself in ongoing racial discrimination and discord. And I believe that the sexual experiences that are described in Beloved are never glorified, they are never for the reader's pleasure or any of the characters' pleasure, they are for depicting the utmost dehumanization and abuse of a person. She decided to write it as a ghost story because the single most uncontroversial thing one can say about the institution of slavery vis-à-vis contemporary time is that it haunts us all. And that was her rationale for making it as a ghost story. So I find that it has great literary merit. I like that we will be alerting parents to their student checking it out so that that conversation can be had with that student. I just wanted to address, in the past, it has been mentioned that I was moved to tears when Ms. Weber read the excerpt from The Bluest Eye, and I just wanted to clarify that I was upset by the manner in which she decided to bring her concerns to the board that very first time that we had ever heard of it. I was angry that in the name of protecting students, she forced those in attendance to hear that passage whether they wanted to or not, and I was furious with myself and the rest of the board for not ending that demonstration as I knew what she was reading early on. So it was not based on the content of the text or the literary merit of that book either.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Mr. Bentley?
I just wanted to say, the presentation answered a lot of my questions I had, so thank you for that. Wes, I was glad to see the amount of times that this book's been checked out, which was a handful, I think. So I think that while there's a lot of discord about the book, that this isn't a glaring issue, I don't think that this is affecting a lot of kids or else we would have heard about it before now. My personal opinion, as a Christian, which I try not to bring into this much, but there's a large population here that I can contact with that is, that if you are any denomination of Christian, you believe that we're here of our own free will, right? And so you take that a step further, she, one of the speakers alluded to it this morning or earlier in that meeting, we fled from, to America to not be forced to think one way. And if you break that down into Greeley, I was pretty ignorant to the diversity of Greeley as a community until I ran for the board, until I started doing a little investigation on, you know, just starting with the registered voters, right? I was under the impression that it was by far red, right? And that is not the case. And you just break that down into a level of equality for everybody and accessibility and opportunities. I think that the board or the committee's recommendation is cast in the broadest net, and I say that multiple times throughout being on my time on the board, but I believe that this recommendation casts the broadest net to allow parents the opportunity to parent their children the way they want to be parented. They want them to be raised, and I don't see, I can't, I can't think of a better way to do it, that wouldn't exclude more students than it would include. And so I agree with the committee's decision and Dr. Pilch's decision. I think that if you are adamant and you want your child's values or access limited, that is already KECR, like has been said multiple times. If not, then I think you're entrusting the school district to do that, and I believe that that's by far and large the best option and way to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
President Matthews, Director Campos Spitsy would like to speak.
Dr. Campos Spitsy?
So I too got to read the entirety of Beloved by Toni Morrison, 324 pages. I was very moved by the book. It's a beautiful piece of literature. It's an important piece of literature that highlights a lot of things that we don't want to relive in our history. I was not surprised by the end of those 324 pages that it won a Pulitzer Prize the year it came out in 1987, and just six years later, Toni Morrison, its author, won the Nobel Prize for Literature. I'm in agreement with the committees that, you know, gave her the Pulitzer and the Nobel Prize, but it truly is a remarkable piece of literature that I would love for my sixth grader to pick up once they reach that age and have conversations with at home. So another comment I just want to make is I'm happy this is happening. I'm happy we live in a free country, a democracy, where we allow for civic engagement and for conversation. I'm part of a seven-member group, our governing school board, and we are going to have diversity of opinions, and that's why there's seven of us. But I'm just thankful we live in a country that allows us to have these difficult conversations. I'm also thankful as a board member that we are governed by our policies, and we have really strong policies in KEC and KECR. You know, my fellow board members and I have come up with some of these policies, some of these have come from board members who came before us, and they were put in place to help us have these difficult conversations and make some difficult decisions. And if you have a chance to read KEC and KECR from our website, you'll see that the committee, you know, they really stayed true to the policies, and I 100% agree with the decision that they came up with, and I too plan to vote to uphold our superintendent's decision to honor the committee's work and recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. Are there other comments or questions from board members? And Sullivan?
I would actually like to read the federal obscenity law. So the standard of what is harmful to minors may differ from the standard applied to adults. Harmful materials for minors include any communication consisting of nudity, sex, excretion, that one appeals to the purient interest of minors, two, patently is offensive to prevailing standards in the adult community with respect to what is suitable material for minors, three, lacks serious literacy, artistic, political, or scientific value for minors. In addition to facing imprisonment and fines, convicted offenders of federal obscenity laws involving minors may be required to register as sex offenders. Furthermore, in some circumstances, obscenity violations involving minors may also subject to prosecution under federal child pornography laws, which yield severe statutory penalties. So if we're talking about this book, we're talking about the bestiality, the rape, I mean, we all know what the content is, but that kind of summarizes it in there. And I guess if what you guys are saying, that this book isn't popular in the class or, you know, and the kids aren't checking them out, but here we are breaking obscenity laws, then why actually keep the book around? Because we could use other books that are both faction of fiction, facts and fictional books that are going to have, that doesn't need to have that extra content. But again, I'm going to reiterate too, the parents weren't asking for a book banning, they were asking for more of the parental consent, but I don't, I'm getting really frustrated, I guess, with how this is going because, I don't know, I would not want my kids reading this book. And here we are, as parents, we want to protect our kids, and we would look at the corruption that's going on, not just within, you know, our state, but clearly around the world with everything going on. Wouldn't you guys want to have the schools to be more of a pure form where the kids aren't going to be triggered, they're not going to be exposed to all the negativity that's around them, and let the parents have the decision what they're exposed to, and let us focus on the content that we're teaching, which we're not obviously doing well, or our kids wouldn't be failing so poorly in our mathematics and our reading levels?
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Mash?
I was just wondering if we could ask, you know? I'm curious about how the First Amendment rights that protect books, you know, I'm curious about Ms. Sullivan's question about the obscenity laws. I guess I would also just like to clarify that two of the four appellants did request removal of the books from the library, so no one here made up the book banning verbiage. That's what they requested.
Ms. Mash, are you asking Mr. Fall to speak to obscenity laws?
Yeah, if we could ask about, yeah, obscenity laws. Ms. Weber stated in her appeal that if she read the book to a child, she would be considered a sex offender, but she did in fact read the book to children, so, but I don't think that any charges have been brought against her.
Mr. Fall, do you feel comfortable answering that question in a public setting and knowing that we are your client? And I understand sometimes that is, that is difficult for attorneys to do, to give attorney-client privileged legal advice, but I don't know if you can speak to Ms. Mash this question, but if you can, she would appreciate it.
Thank you, President Matthews and members of the board. So I believe the board already understands the standards behind whether or not to accept the book Beloved, whether to uphold the superintendent's recommendation or to reject it and come out with a different outcome. And that would be based on educational suitability and pervasive vulgarity. I believe that Director Sullivan is referring to what is known as the Miller Test, which was taken from a United States Supreme Court case, Miller v. California, decided back in 1973. And I'll just read the three-prong test to you without really going into further detail. I think if we want to talk more about obscenity, it would be appropriate to either enter into executive session or have that discussion at another time. But the three-prong test established under Miller is number one, whether the average person applying contemporary community standards would find the work taken as a whole appeals to the purient interest. Purient, and let me look that up for you all, because I don't know it actually. Having or encouraging an excessive interest in sexual matters. The second part of the test is whether the work depicts or describes in a patently offensive way sexual conduct described by applicable state law. And three, whether the work taken as a whole lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. So if all three prongs are met, there could be a violation of obscenity laws, at least as decided by the Miller case back in 1973. But again, I think that that would require us to have kind of further discussion on that, particularly for the second prong, in discussing applicable state laws that prescribes, relates to sexual conduct.
Thank you, Mr. Fall. Mr. Bentley?
I just wanted to, from my understanding of what we've been told about the legal process and the First Amendment, that now that the book is in the school, it changes the laws and the protections it has, and to put a parental, from what I understood, if I'm not mistaken, to put a restriction on it is, in the law's eyes, the same as banning it. So even if we didn't, then, we didn't ban it, but we're restricting access, which is the same as banning the book. And from my understanding, that would require, could give us some legal problems if we were even to put a ban on, a restriction on it at all. So I just wanted to comment that.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Other questions or comments from board members? Ms. Pappas?
May I make a motion?
Yes, Ms. Pappas.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six upholds the superintendent's decision regarding the recommendation of the review committee for Beloved by Toni Morrison, based on the rationale included in the review committee's findings and recommendation. Second.
Thank you both. Is there discussion on the motion? Not seeing other discussion, but I haven't spoken, and so I would like to speak as Simply to say, I don't find, I agree with my fellow board members that this, one, that this does not break obscenity laws as, according to the Miller Test. It is, it is not pornography. Pornography must, is determined by what is, what a work, whether that's a picture or whether that's a reading, is designed to do. That's how we define what pornography is. What was, what was the, what was the author's intent? Right? And when you read this book, it is very clear that pornography is not the author's intent. Sexual excitement is not the author's intent. It is not sexually exciting in any way. There, as Ms. Pappas said, it is, it is a hard read. It is difficult to look at the brutality of slavery. It is difficult to look at the dehumanization of slavery. And certainly, part of that dehumanization has to, is sexual in nature, that dehumanization of slavery. And that is, part of that is when it speaks of bestiality in this book, it is, it portrays it not as something good, does not glorify it, it does not say that it's right, it says it's dehumanizing. And this is what people were forced to do. This is what people felt they had to do. It says that a woman felt so horrified by the idea of her child going back into slavery that she, that she killed her child. And this novel's based on, that's a historical fact. Toni Morrison took that fact and turned it into a novel. So this is a, this is a difficult read, it's a hard read. But I do like, it's not pervasive vulgarity, and it is educationally suitable for our students. I think our committee is right. I appreciate the people that are on our committee. We've heard numerous times tonight, we need to listen to the parents. And none of our complainants, none of our appellants, none of the four appellants are parents of children in this district. None of, none of the 175 people that filled out this form checked that they were, checked that they were parents. I know that some of them are, but they didn't check that on their form. And so I don't know, there may be a handful that are, that are parents, but most did not. Our committee had five parents. They went to the parents who have invested in the school district, who make all kinds of decisions for the school district, and they went to those parents, had those parents on that committee. They listened to their opinion as well as the opinion of some of our best educators. I don't know who all the committee people are, but I do know a couple, and they are some of our best educators. So, Mr. Tuttle, I appreciate it, and Dr. Pilch, I appreciate the quality of the committee that you put together. I appreciate that we are, when we listen to this committee's recommendation, that represents our parents. And further, as a parent, and I have a, this book is in five libraries in our district, I have children in three of those, those schools. And for my high school students, I would have no problem with my children reading this book. For my middle schooler, I would not want him to read the book, but I'm also, I have the right tomorrow to go to Chapelo and say, "I don't, I don't want my child reading Beloved, please restrict him from reading Beloved." But I'm not going to do that. And the reason I'm not going to do that is because I know my child, and I know he has no interest in reading Beloved. I've had this book sitting on my coffee table for the last three weeks, he's never thought about picking it up. I would encourage us to actually trust the parents. To trust the parent, the parents know their children, the parents know what's happening in their children's education, and if they don't like what our educational professionals have placed in the library, they can opt their children out. That's the system that we have currently. And so, again, I feel like, I feel like all of this... And so, again, I, I feel like, I feel like all of this. And, and I do want to apologize to our students. And I, I wish, I wish I could have better prevented, you know, what, what was said in, in front of you tonight. The vulgarity that was used, that you didn't, you didn't get a chance to opt out of. And so, Richard and Jilly, I'm, I'm sorry for you. I'm sorry to, to our parents at home. I'm sorry to, to those, to our students who have to watch board meetings for their, for their classes, and we do have classes where children or our high schoolers are required to watch board meetings. I'm sorry that, that they had to hear that as well. But I, I do appreciate you being here and, and I, I thank you for, for your service. And yeah, I, I do believe that we're, they're already listening to parents. We already have a, a good system for this. And, and so I will be voting to support the superintendent's recommendation as well. Ms. Sullivan?
I was just, you had said, asked if there was any questions that you wanted to add to the discussion. And I guess I'm going to ask, would this, would this board consider at least putting it on since we require a permission slip for high school students taking a college AP class to have a signed permission slip, that we have a permission prior to the student checking it out in the library, whether it be middle school or high school, at least?
There's already a motion that's been moved and, and second. And so we're, we're speaking to that motion to approve, to approve the superintendent's recommendation. Is there any other further discussion? Ms. Lemon, I think we're ready for a vote.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Nay.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Nay.
Motion carries five, two.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, that is all the business that we have tonight. Thank you for, for sticking with us for, for all three hours. We appreciate your dedication to the district. This meeting is adjourned.